Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to our meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, December 14th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, it is just shy of 10:20 a.m. and we have seven members present, three shy of a quorum. But we also have a couple of special presentations scheduled for today. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and colleagues. We have a couple of presentations this morning. And the first one is to, a little bittersweetly, congratulate and bid goodbye to John Davidson, who I'm pleased to welcome here today and to express our thanks for the work that he has done in our city for the last 25 years. John is one of the nation's preeminent gay and lesbian civil rights lawyers. He could probably take out even gay and lesbian civil rights and he would just be one of our preeminent lawyers in the country as well. But what he has contributed to civil rights, equal rights, and dignity in this city has had ripples that are extended far beyond the borders of our city and our county. Let me give you a little idea of just what a remarkable man John is. After graduating from Yale Law School, he joined the law firm that I know Mr. Weiss worked sometime at, Irel Manella, where he became a partner. At Irel, John had one of the first great successes on the people's work, doing pro bono work on behalf of the homeless in our city. And his groundbreaking litigation ultimately led to the founding of LASSA, the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, the Joint Powers Authority, when both the city and the county at the time were saying homelessness wasn't their responsibility. His pro bono work called to him even more strongly though, and he ultimately made the tough decision to leave a lucrative career to work full-time as gay and lesbian civil rights movement. And he directed initially the ACLU's Gay and Lesbian Civil Rights Project for seven years. He then joined the Los Angeles Office of Lambda Legal Defense and Education Fund, where he's been toiling in the trenches for the past 10 years. As you all know, Lambda is probably the nation's largest and oldest legal organization dedicated to civil rights of gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgendered people, as well as people who are living with HIV and AIDS. While Lambda, John has played important roles in every aspect of civil rights, from HIV discrimination to the Boy Scouts issues, to the First Amendment rights of students, to gay and lesbian marriage. He's smart, he's strategic, he's hardworking, and a good soul. And it shows in the successes, the many successes that he has had. His success with Lambda unfortunately is taking John from Los Angeles to New York City, where John will become Lambda's national legal director in its headquarters office. While we have great Lambda folks here, John will be missed in Los Angeles. It gives me great pleasure to thank you for your service, John, to present on behalf of the city of Los Angeles this resolution. And, of course. All right. We'd like to present this certificate on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, signed by the members of the City Council. Mayor, City Attorney, and our City Controller congratulate you and thank you for all you have done to make this a better city for all of its residents. We know that you'll continue doing that from your national platform, and we look forward to welcoming you back whenever you come back to Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Alex. Eric.
Ms. School.
Thank you very much. I'm very... Sorry. Interrupt. We want to hear from you, but we get a chance to give you further accolades. And Eric mentioned so many of the efforts that we met early on with the establishment of the lawsuit against the county of Los Angeles on the homeless issue, as well as on the gay and lesbian issues throughout the years when I worked for the mayor. And I just want to add my congratulations and thank you for the, I think, imprint you've made here in the city of Los Angeles. And it obviously has had national implications, and we're so pleased that you now, we have to share you with other people, but that you will still be dealing with issues that we care about so much in the city of Los Angeles. And I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, because you were there when a lot of people were not there and stood up for people who did not have a voice. And so I want to just publicly say thank you to you for all of your hard work. And there are people out there who may not know that you changed their life, but you did. So, thank you very much, John. Congratulations.
Thank you. Just want to say, I went to high school in Los Angeles. I've lived here for the last 25 years, and I will always consider it my home, and I look forward to returning here at some point. I'll be visiting a lot, because I have, we have an office here, lots of colleagues, friends, and family here. I love Los Angeles. And it's only the opportunity to do this work on really national scale that's taken me away for a little while. So, thank you very much. Thank you. One other, I'd like to invite our award winners from our star performers of our Workforce Investment Board up here right now as well. Colleagues, we talk a lot about increased accountability. And making sure that the federal dollars that we have the opportunity to spend on making sure that everybody in this city has an opportunity to work hard and to be rewarded for work. Today, we should be very proud, because we are honoring four of the organizations that help us in the community, that actually take the federal dollars given to us through the city's Workforce Investment Board, and spend that money in trying to make sure that people have good work, good-paying work, and that they have the skills to be able to compete in the modern economy. There are four winners this year, and as I mentioned upstairs just before this, unfortunately from the federal level, at a time when our economy so badly needs it, we've had pretty drastic cuts to our workforce training dollars. These are dollars that business embraces, and of course that workers embrace, to be able to make sure that youth who might be entering the workplace for the first time have skills, or whether it's an adult that has been out of work or needs to learn new skills to be able to get a better-paying job or to find work, that they have an opportunity through our work source centers to be able to do just that. The four honorees this year are El Proyecto del Barrio, which is being honored for its youth work in two different locations, two three-star awards out of a maximum of four. But as I think they said, that's six stars altogether, so congratulations on that. Chinatown Work Source Center as well, we'll be hearing from each one of these in a second. The Chatsworth North Ridge Work Source Center, Mr. Smith was upstairs helping celebrate their award for the great work that they're doing out in the northeast valley, sorry, northwest valley as well. And then the Hollywood Work Source Center, MCS, and the folks who helped make that happen. Charlie Wu is here, who is our Chair of the Workforce Investment Board. I'd like to afford him the opportunity to say a couple of words before we make the formal presentation today of the awards and allow the partners out there that are doing this amazing work to say a few words as well. So, please welcome Charlie Wu.
Good morning. My name is Charlie Wu. I'm the Chair of the Workforce Investment Board. Together with the City Council, we oversee the nation's second-largest job placement searching and training program for over 110,000 residents of Los Angeles. We don't do the work ourselves, and it really gives me a great pleasure to recognize those that do the work, day in and day out. And these are the people that not only do it well, they do it at an excellent, excellent level. We are very happy to see that. We have four organizations here today. Last year, when we started this program, we had one organization. And the same organization, Chinatown Service Center, is back this year and joined by three other organizations. This is really a wonderful improvement, and more and more people are stepping up to the plate and to provide the kind of services very much needed in Los Angeles. It's really a great pleasure for me to celebrate with all of you the outstanding achievement of these hardworking people, servants, public servants.
Ms. Trucardenas.
I think it's only appropriate that I ask Mr. Wu and put him on the spot. I'd like to ask you a couple of questions. What's probably the best thing that a child looks forward to at Christmas time?
Toys.
A toy. Very good. Right answer. And truthful answer. Now, what's the best thing that a family could want and expect any time of the year?
A job.
A job. Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Wu. I just wanted to tell Los Angeles that you are providing that to families and to children, and you've been doing it for many years. A lot of people don't realize that, but you're a very giving, giving individual. And thank you for helping us put a smile on the face of little children this Christmas time with the toys that you donated throughout the San Fernando Valley and throughout the city. In addition to that, thank you for the work that you've been doing for so many years to help put a smile on the face of parents so that they can provide for their families. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Wu, and thank you, Ms. Trucardenas. Mr. Wu's generosity throughout the city is incredible. First, we'd like to congratulate Chatsworth North Ridge Work Source Center, four-star performer in Build Rehabilitation Industries, and on behalf of the Matt Lynch, and we have Ruth Aquilera here as well. Congratulations to you both. Next, from Chinatown Work Source Center, our good friend Lawrence Liu is here. And congra-
We have a couple of presentations this morning. And the first one is to, a little bittersweetly, congratulate and bid goodbye to John Davidson, who I'm pleased to welcome here today and to express our thanks for the work that he's done in our city for the last 25 years. John is one of the nation's preeminent gay and lesbian civil rights lawyers. He could probably take out even gay and lesbian civil rights and he would just be one of our preeminent lawyers in the country as well. But what he's contributed to, civil rights, equal rights, and dignity in this city, has had ripples that are extended far beyond the borders of our city and our county. Let me give you a little idea of just what a remarkable man John is. After graduating from Yale Law School, he joined the law firm that I know Mr. Weiss worked sometime at, Irel Manella, where he became a partner. At Irel, John had one of the first great successes on the people's work, doing pro bono work on behalf of the homeless in our city. And his groundbreaking litigation ultimately led to the founding of LASSA, the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, the Joint Powers Authority, when both the city and the county at the time were saying homelessness wasn't their responsibility. His pro bono work called to him even more strongly, though, and he ultimately made the tough decision to leave a lucrative career to work full-time as gay and lesbian civil rights movement. And he directed initially the ACLU's Gay and Lesbian Civil Rights Project for seven years. He then joined the Los Angeles Office of Lambda Legal Defense and Education Fund, where he's been toiling in the trenches for the past 10 years. As you all know, Lambda is probably the nation's largest and oldest legal organization dedicated to the civil rights of gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgendered people, as well as people who are living with HIV and AIDS. While at Lambda, John has played important roles in every aspect of civil rights, from HIV discrimination, to Boy Scouts issues, to the First Amendment rights of students, to gay and lesbian marriage. He's smart, he's strategic, he's hardworking, and a good soul. And it shows in the successes, the many successes that he has had. His success with Lambda, unfortunately, is taking John from Los Angeles to New York City, where John will become Lambda's National Legal Director in its headquarters office. While we have great Lambda folks here, John will be missed in Los Angeles. It gives me great pleasure to thank you for your service, John, to present on behalf of the City of Los Angeles this resolution.
Of course.
All right. We'd like to present this certificate on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, signed by the members of the City Council. Mayor, and City Attorney and our City Controller congratulate you and thank you for all you have done to make this a better city for all of its residents. We know that you'll continue doing that from your national platform, and we look forward to welcoming you back whenever you come back to Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Alex. Eric.
Ms. Skool.
Thank you very much. I'm very...
Sorry.
Thank you.
Interrupt. We want to hear from you, but we get a chance to give you further accolades. And Eric mentioned so many of the efforts that we met early on with the establishment of the lawsuit against the County of Los Angeles on the homeless issue, as well as on the gay and lesbian issues throughout the years when I worked for the mayor. And I just want to add my congratulations and thank you for the, I think, imprint you've made here in the City of Los Angeles. And it obviously has had national implications, and we're so pleased that you now, we have to share you with other people, but that you will still be dealing with issues that we care about so much in the City of Los Angeles. And I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, because you were there when a lot of people were not there, and stood up for people who did not have a voice. And so I want to just publicly say thank you to you for all of your hard work, and the people out there who may not know that you changed their life, but you did. So, thank you very much, John. Congratulations.
Thank you. Just want to say, I went to high school in Los Angeles. I've lived here for the last 25 years, and I will always consider it my home, and I look forward to returning here at some point. I'll be visiting a lot, because I have, we have an office here, lots of colleagues, friends and family here. I love Los Angeles. And it's only the opportunity to do this work on really national scale that's taken me away for a little while. So, thank you very much.
One other, I'd like to invite our award winners from our star performers of our Workforce Investment Board up here right now as well. Colleagues, we talk a lot about increased accountability. And making sure that the federal dollars that we have the opportunity to spend on making sure that everybody in this city has an opportunity to work hard and to be rewarded for work. Today, we should be very proud, because we are honoring four of the organizations that help us in the community, that actually take the federal dollars given to us through the city's Workforce Investment Board, and spend that money in trying to make sure that people have good work, good-paying work, and that they have the skills to be able to compete in the modern economy. There are four winners this year. And as I mentioned upstairs just before this, unfortunately, from the federal level, at a time when our economy so badly needs it, we've had pretty drastic cuts to our workforce training dollars. These are dollars that business embraces, and of course, that workers embrace, to be able to make sure that youth who might be entering the workplace for the first time have skills, or whether it's an adult that has been out of work or needs to learn new skills to be able to get a better-paying job, or to find work, that they have an opportunity through our WorkSource Centers to be able to do just that. The four honorees this year are El Proyecto del Barrio, which is being honored for its youth work in two different locations, two three-star awards out of a maximum of four. But as I think they said, that's six stars altogether, so congratulations on that. Chinatown WorkSource Center as well, we'll be hearing from each one of these in a second. The Chatsworth-Northridge WorkSource Center, Mr. Smith was upstairs helping celebrate their award for the great work that they're doing out in the Northeast Valley, sorry, Northwest Valley as well. And then the Hollywood WorkSource Center, MCS, and the folks who helped make that happen. Charlie Wu is here, who is our Chair of the Workforce Investment Board. I'd like to afford him the opportunity to say a couple of words before we make the formal presentation today of the awards, and allow the partners out there that are doing this amazing work to say a few words as well. So, please welcome Charlie Wu.
Good morning. My name is Charlie Wu. I'm the Chair of the Workforce Investment Board. Together with the City Council, we oversee the nation's second-largest job placement searching and training program for over 110,000 residents of Los Angeles. We don't do the work ourselves, and it really gives me a great pleasure to recognize those that do the work, day in and day out. And these are the people that not only do it well, they do it at an excellent, excellent level. We are very happy to see that. We have four organizations here today. Last year, when we started this program, we had one organization. And the same organization, Chinatown Service Center, is back this year, and joined by three other organizations. This is really a wonderful improvement, and more and more people are stepping up to the plate and to provide the kind of services very much needed in Los Angeles. It's really a great pleasure for me to celebrate with all of you the outstanding achievement of these hard-working people, servants, public servants.
Mr. Cardenas.
I think it's only appropriate that I ask Mr. Wu and put him on the spot. I'd like to ask you a couple of questions. What's probably the best thing that a child looks forward to at Christmas time?
Toys.
A toy. Very good. Right answer. And truthful answer. Now, what's the best thing that a family could want and expect any time of the year?
A job.
Job.
A job. Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Wu. I just wanted to tell Los Angeles that you are providing that to families and to children, and you've been doing it for many years. A lot of people don't realize that, but you're a very giving, giving individual. And thank you for helping us put a smile on the face of little children this Christmas time with the toys that you've donated throughout the San Fernando Valley and throughout the city. In addition to that, thank you for the work that you've been doing for so many years to help put a smile on the face of parents, so that they can provide for their families. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wu, and thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Wu's generosity throughout the city is incredible. First, we'd like to congratulate Chatsworth-Northridge WorkSource Center, four-star performer in Build Rehabilitation Industries, and on behalf of them, Matt Lynch, and we have Ruth Aquilera here as well. Congratulations to you both.
Thank you very much.
Next, from Chinatown WorkSource Center, our good friend Lawrence Liu is here, and congratulations on a repeat performance. We look forward to you working hard and maybe even making it a three-peat next year. And El Proyecto del Barrio, areas two and three, three-star performer, six-star winner, Ken Worthing, Jennifer Rodriguez, and Hymanat Fekadu. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
And then lastly, but certainly not least, organization that's helped us, among other
things, with the great innovative health career ladder program, Phil Star and the Hollywood North WorkSource Center, also formerly known, I guess, as MCS Rehabilitation, a four-star performer. Congratulations on all that you're doing in the heart of the city.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, Hollywood Works has enjoyed the opportunity of growing here in the city. We started off as a small satellite 97, and now we're a full center at Sunset and Wilcox. Everyone's welcome to come, refer people there. And we'd just like to thank the businesses and job seekers and their families of Los Angeles in supporting our center.
The Chatsworth-Northridge Center is operated by Build Rehabilitation Industries, which for 38 years has been serving people with developmental disabilities in the San Fernando Valley. By serving people with serious disabilities, we have learned one thing, that you have to have heart to survive. Our staff at the Chatsworth-Northridge Center has heart, and that's why we did so well this year.
This program is so important to the communities that we are delighted to be recognized in this fashion. From the Board of Directors' point of view, it's great to see an organization that buys in completely and is committed to its mission statement, and that is our organization at this time. Thank you.
On behalf of the Board of Directors and the staff of the Chinatown Service Center, we really appreciate this honor and privilege that you have accorded us, the recognition for our second year. It's an our honor to be contributing to this wonderful city and its residents, and to contribute to the economy, and just as Councilman Cardenas said, to contribute jobs, and really to bring smiles to people's faces again in this holiday season. Thank you very much, and thank you for your partnership of the city.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to rise and thank my colleague and everyone here for their hard work. Back in the mid-'90s, when we were staffing, I was a staff person for, then Councilman Hernandez running that committee. A lot of work went into how we restructure, how we analyze, how we bring in fresh, new blood, how we inspire people to continue working, both on the private and public side. And obviously, it's evolved to a point where we reach these levels of efficiency. And just on a personal, I want to thank Charlie Wu and Shu Wu for all their work, their help. I just want to let you know that this past Christmas season, we had a toy giveaway to hundreds and hundreds of kids. And the Wu brothers stepped up big time. For them, because of them, many kids have toys this Christmas season. So, thank you so much for your support, and all of you for your hard work. Congratulations.
Mr. Smith.
I just want to join with my colleague, Mr. Reyes, in congratulating, first of all, Mr. Wu and the board, in particular, and Mr. Garcetti, but also particularly to Matt Lynch, who I just figured out, I was calculating, I have known now for 28 years. So, we go back, I remember when he had a lot more hair and it was a lot darker, but so was mine. But anyway, we've had a great relationship, and particularly El Proyecto del Barrio as well in the Valley. When I first came to City Council in 1979 with Mr. Burnson, was the chairman of the Grants Committee, as it was called back then, and the Grants Board, which we no longer have. And we started working with, before it was even the Workforce Investment Board at the time. And so I had a lot of work to do, because in the Valley, we didn't have any of these programs. All these programs were centered downtown, and the Valley got nothing. And now we have two stellar performers, and so I want to congratulate both of them for not just being in the Valley, but realizing that these needs are throughout the city of LA now. And as we go forward to become an internationally great city, your work is even going to be greater, because we're going to have more and more things to do for you. But particularly, that we have two stellar performers in the San Fernando Valley is a great achievement. So, thank you, Matt, and thank you, El Proyecto, too.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to join my colleagues and congratulate each and every one of you for what you've done. Charlie, I know that you're busy this time of the year. Everyone's down there getting toys, and I know you donate toys and help many, many people throughout this area. The WorkSource Center, and I've visited the one on Nordoff and...
Mason.
Mason. I remember when I was newly elected, I went up there for a breakfast and visited with you, and I remember seeing the sign in front, and I said, "What do we do here?" Obviously, we create jobs, opportunities for people. I was very impressed with the operations continued. So, congratulations to all of you for that work, that effort. You're helping change lives, helping make people learn that work is available, opportunities are available, and you're making that bridge connection. So, congratulations to all of you. And Eric, thank you for bringing these folks around, especially all of you who came down from the San Fernando Valley, had to wake up at 4:00 in order to get here by 10:00. I understand the travel every day. Thank you. Congratulations to all.
Thank you all very much. I also would commend to you the Workforce Development System, the annual report of the WIB, which has just come out recently. Want to thank Manny Chavez, Robert Science, Bruce Stensley, Rookie Alex Paxton, of course, the whole WIB Board, and everybody who has worked really hard on this. This is the piece that each one of us should look at, close to $100 million that we spend each year in various programs, and that we are trying to increase accountability from, and I think we are getting as much service out of, even in a time of fewer resources. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and congratulations again to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for calling on the next presentation. Let me ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grolhan, Labange, Ludo, Miskowski, Parks, Harry, Reyes, Smith, Viegosa, Weiss, Sain Padilla, 13 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Let me recognize Councilmember Han for presentation.
Hi. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi. That's good. Hi. Yeah, Caroline. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I am very pleased, I think we have a very, very special presentation right now. I am so pleased that we have with us this morning Luis Cinco, who is the husband of my San Pedro community advocate, Carolyn Brady Cinco. And Luis, a photographer with the LA Times, recently returned home from Iraq, where he covered the Battle of Fallujah. He traveled to Iraq in the summer of 2003, and then returned again for seven weeks just this past October, November. As part of his assignment, he was embedded with the U.S. Marines, 1st Battalion, 8th Regiment, Charlie Company, in Fallujah during the October invasion and the securing of the major insurgent territory. While in Fallujah, Luis risked his life, literally, every day to bring the front lines of the war in Iraq to us here in Los Angeles and throughout the country. His most famous photo is probably that of the battle-weary Lance Corporal James Miller, smoking a cigarette following a long day on the battlefield, which captured worldwide attention. It ran on the front page of more than 110 newspapers across America. Prompted in an emotional commentary from CBS News, anchor Dan Rather, highlighted a slideshow on CNN and garnered Miller an invitation to the White House. Luis moved to Los Angeles in 1984 and worked for various newspapers in Southern California. While at the news pilot in San Pedro, he had his first war assignment covering the war in Croatia. His photos and stories resonated with our sizable Croatian community in San Pedro. He has worked at the Times since 1993 and was part of the Pulitzer Prize-winning teams that covered the Northridge earthquake of '94 and the fires of 2003. He has covered both Republican and Democratic Party conventions, the execution of Oklahoma City bomber Timothy McVeigh, and the space shuttle disaster of 2003. As I mentioned earlier, Luis is married to Caroline, my staff member, and while he was away in Iraq, Caroline was holding on the home front. She was a single mother, caring for their three children, Andy Carley and newborn Luisa. Luis also has a 14-year-old daughter, Sunny, and I know that they are all very proud of you. If we can make it happen, we have a clip right now of Luis's photos that ran on CNN, and I would like to show that tape right now. Run tape.
up, and basically, this part of town is all abandoned. Every time we go into a house, we basically have to do a full-on search. These guys with their guns out, kicking down doors, not only looking for insurgents, but making sure they aren't booby-trapped. So, it's pretty hairy over here. Further down the street, very quickly came upon two insurgents in the middle of the street, and one was very badly hurt. And the Marine medics immediately turned him over to see if there was any grenades or explosives underneath him. They started helping him out. I understand that he died shortly thereafter, and there were bullets flying everywhere. So, we regrouped and went to a very nearby house from where we were standing, kicked down the gate, so they did their room-to-room search again. And then they immediately went up to the roof and set up positions, and the Marines all started taking turns sleeping. There's been shooting here all through the day. I think that sounds like they're launching mortars, basically. This was an incredible day, just an incredible day. This is Luis Cinco's staff photographer for the Los Angeles Times in Fallujah, Iraq.
Luis, your work is so moving, and again, it really brought it home to us here. It was hard for myself and our office to actually look at these photos, because when we looked at it, we realized you were right there, taking the photo, and we knew, even though she didn't say it, when you called her on the phone, we knew Caroline was every day and night worried, and really praying for your safe return, and calming the children down, making sure they knew that you were safe and were coming home. Thanks for literally risking your life to bring these images to us in our safe breakfast rooms every morning, where we got to read and look at the LA Times. Your sacrifice, the sacrifice of your family, is greatly appreciated by all of us. And on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we have a full City Council resolution thanking you, and it's a token of our appreciation for your sacrifice. Thanks, Luis.
Thank you.
And before you speak, I know you're an LA Times photographer, but we have an alternate newspaper in San Pedro called The Random Links, and they actually did a cover story on Luis, and particularly on Caroline and her three children. And we've got that framed for you, Caroline, to know that you were our hero as well.
Thank you.
Let me recognize the council's historian and photographer, Tom Labange.
You shouldn't mention me in that same room. Luis, congratulations for your profession. Congratulations being side-by-side with the men and women of the United States Armed Forces, capturing what is a horrific experience, war. I've never seen that, and to see the pictures and how you describe them there is unbelievable. And to your beautiful wife and child and other children, and your wife's employer and staff, the connection there is so important. But as an artist, I just want to speak to you and others in your profession, especially your colleague Carolyn Cole. The work that you did would make those photographs and those images walk out of the newspaper in the morning. When I would see where you would get those angles and get down on your belly to try to capture the work of a Marine unit doing their job, it would make them walk out. So, you really worked hard as trying to bring that back to us. And I'm sure you worked with the writers who captured the reports and the words from the activity all around, but the images, the graphics, will forever be in our minds. Congratulations to you as a great photographer, for one of the greatest team of newspaper photographers at the Los Angeles Times. You're right on that top, and I think you may follow Carolyn Cole, who won a Pulitzer for her work last year. You surely deserved it for the images that you captured. Congratulations to you and your family, and thank you, Ms. Han, for bringing this very special person to this chamber.
Thank you. Luis does not like to be on this side of the camera, but we're going to ask him just to say a few words to us this morning. Luis.
Thank you, Councilwoman Han. Councilman Labange, thank you very much. Thank you, the full City Council. I just want to say that it's nice to be recognized. However, I am just a small part of a very large and talented staff of photographers and reporters who put their lives at risk every day, whether it's down the street or around the world, to bring you the news. So, I just accept this in behalf of the entire staff of the Los Angeles Times. And I'd like to thank my wife, Caroline, for being so supportive.
Yeah.
And finally, I'd like to thank the guys and the Marines, the 1st Marine Battalion, 8th Regiment, Charlie Company, who are representing us overseas with a lot of professionalism and pride, and I hope they all make it home safely and soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Ms. Han. This concludes the presentations for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Miskowski moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Zine seconds. Thanks for the reminder. Members of the council, members of the public, this is Tuesday, the first meeting of the week. As is customary, we do have our salute to the flag scheduled for today. Let me ask Mr. Reyes to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. Everyone, please join me. Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Let's hold off on public comment for just a minute. Let's go through the agenda and dispense with consent items.
Okay. On the regular agenda, Mr. President, there is a request to continue item number five, and that request is from Mr. Parks to continue that matter to January 7.
Members, any objection to continuing item number five? Seeing none, item five is continued.
And City Attorney's requesting item number 50, the closed-session item, be continued to January 12.
Okay. Any objection to continuing item number 50? Seeing none, item 50 is continued. Mr. Ludo.
Yeah, just a little bit out of order, but timely. Just the gentleman that you just had do the pledge of allegiance, just wanted to announce that he's the newest appointee to the Metropolitan Transportation Authority, new Board of Directors member, Ed Reyes. We want to thank Mayor Han for appointing him to the MTA. Thank you, Ed. We're looking forward to your leadership. Let's give him a real round of applause.
Congratulations to the former Chair of the Gold Line Authority and newest member of the MTA Board. Mr. Cardenas?
I'd like to call item 10, 11, and 12 special.
Okay. We're almost there.
Okay.
Madam Clerk.
Items went through 22 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item one is a commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold commission appointments on the desk, and we'll take those up first under items called special. Members, items 1 through 22 are now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Do we have any requests for specials? Mr. Cardenas calls 10, 11, and 12 special. Ms. Miskowski.
Item 7, special, and a motion has been circulated. I think we can act on it. It allows, asks the Treasurer to re-advertise for new bids, and the City Treasurer is instructed to re... to report to the council after the rebids on the results and also then continue the consideration of the assessment project for 60-day to allow for the advertisement of that. So I think with that, we can act on seven. And I would also like to call eight special.
Okay. Members, we have a motion on item number seven. We'll consider that without objection. Eight calls special by Ms. Misakowski. Mr. Weiss?
13 and 21, please, Mr. President.
13 and 21, call special by Mr. Weiss.
And, Mr. President, excuse me, on items two and three, there are new ordinances that are before council.
Okay. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. Items number 19 and 20 together, please.
19 and 20 by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Any other specials on items 1 through 22? Seeing none on the balance of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved. Forthwith, please, on items two and three. Next item.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 23 through 49, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, items 23 through 49 are before the council today. I do have cards on items 23 and 48. We'll call those items special. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open and closed. Specials, Mr. Weiss?
Item 47, please.
47. Call special by Mr. Weiss. Ms. Zine?
44.
44. Call special by Ms. Zine. Other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
On the supplemental agenda, items for which public hearings have been held, 51 through 53. Item 51 is a commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk also?
Let's hold 51 on the desk. Leaving items 52 and 53, public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, specials. Ms. Grul.
On behalf of Ms. Labusch, item 52.
52, call special for Ms. Labusch. Mr. Reyes?
On behalf of Councilmember Biaragua, 53, please.
53, call special for Ms. Biaragua. And I believe that does it for the agenda. Coming back to items called special, let's take up, colleagues, the items in the following order. We'll take commission appointments, and then we'll come to general public comment, and then we'll come back to do balance of the items called special. Tell them the plan. Madam Clerk.
First item is item number one, and that's confirmation of Commander Mark Leep to the Emergency Preparedness Commission. Public Safety Committee report is recommending approval.
Okay. Members, we have a committee report recommending approval. Welcome, Mr. Leep. And members of the Council wishing to be heard on item number one. Ms. Zine?
I'd just like to commend the commander for his dedication and service to the people of Los Angeles, a stellar career and great knowledge, great experience. I know that we are in good hands with your leadership and your experience and all the different positions you've held within the police department. And I know that your concern about public safety is paramount. Your dedication is duly recognized and well-qualified for this position, which you've held in the past. And I know during committee, I asked how long you'll be here, because we need you to maintain that for the protection of the people of Los Angeles. So congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. You don't need to be any more embarrassed than maybe you already are. But you have been just an extraordinary public servant in the three and a half years that we've worked together. You've performed a variety of roles for the police department. But your expertise in terms of what the LAPD can do and what it can do better and what it needs to do better in the area of terror and preparedness is truly invaluable and irreplaceable in this city. And I just wanted to tell you publicly how much I appreciate everything you do and the great deal of care and thought you give to matters before reaching your conclusions. Only makes your conclusions all that much more powerful. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Other members of the Council wishing to be heard on item number one. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll in confirmation. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Next item, please.
The next item is item number 51, and that's Public Works Committee Report recommending approval, Ms. Yolanda Fuentes to the Board of Public Works.
Ms. Carradines?
Mr. President, some members of the community have filled out some cards to speak. Could we open it up for public hearing, please?
Okay. Is there an objection to reopening the public hearing? If none, then, Madam Clerk, can we put up a 10-minute clock, please? And I'll read off the names of the speaker cards that have been submitted in order. I will try to get to as many of you as we can in a 10-minute period. Will Jim Hilfenhouse, please, come forward, followed by Martha Cisneros, Brisa Sotelo, Judith Hirschberg, Lynn Hilfenhouse, and Sue Shannon, if you would form a line behind the podium that would expedite the public hearing? And there are additional cards that have been submitted. I'll read additional names as we proceed through public hearing. In any order, just come forward and introduce yourself, please.
Good morning, Council members. It's a pleasure to be here and look at you and a bigger pleasure to say some kind words for our candidate. When I was gerrymandered out of my council district, I turned to council district six for all my issues, problems, and complaints. And I have to tell you that Yolanda was at the receiving end for about three years of all these questions, complaints, issues, compliments. She was always there to give me an answer. And if she didn't have the answer, she called me back. She is knowledgeable of the city. She is willing and energetic. She will understand what she has to do. And I think she will be very, very good for the City of Los Angeles. So I'm here to say, please know that the community backs her, even the community that's not in her district backs her for the good job she's been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes. Jim Hilfenhouse, representing Labor's Local 300. And I'm here to speak on behalf of our business manager, Sergio Roscon, in support of Yolanda Fuentes for the Public Works Commission. Sergio wanted to say that we've known Yolanda. She's been part of our Labor family at Local 300, her family members. She's supported us and Labor throughout many fights, been our responsive person and liaison to Tony. She's exceptionally thorough and diligent in completing and communicating complicated situations and being diplomatic with everybody involved. We think she's going to be a real ace in this commission. And we support her in anything that she would choose to do and know that she's going to work for the betterment of all the constituents of the city. So we would recommend support of this. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sue Shannon. I'm superintendent of Local District Two, which is in the east San Fernando Valley of Los Angeles Unified School District. And I'm here to enthusiastically support the nomination of Yolanda Fuentes to the Board of Public Works. Since I was assigned to the position in District Two, I have had the wonderful opportunity to work with Yolanda in a variety of relationships. She has been very supportive of many of the programs that we have in our schools, whether it's our Healthy Start programs, our Mother Daughter program to encourage girls to go into college. She has been very active in our PCAC, which is our Parent Community Advisory Committee, which is comprised of teachers, parents, high school students, and staff. In fact, she was elected to be president of that committee. Through all of these projects, I have found her to be very professional, very fair, and someone who can bring a variety of people together around a common issue. So I once again would like to very enthusiastically support the nomination of Yolanda Fuentes.
Thank you very much. Let me read another few names here as I hold the clock. Martha Cisneros, Brisa Sotelo, Lynn Hilfenhouse, Andy Lipkis, Gustavo Valdivia, Josefina Andrade.
Hi, I'm Lynn Hilfenhouse. I chair the Democratic Party Women's Caucus. I've been fortunate to work and know Yolanda Fuentes for many, many years. I rise in support of her nomination. I am so impressed with Yolanda as a young woman, what she's done for her community, for what she's done for women, encouraging them to be part of the political process and the electoral process. But I'm also fortunate enough to know Yolanda in another way. I work for a nonprofit foundation that works with people with developmental disabilities. And while we are very fortunate to have Wendy Grul as our council member, we feel we actually get two council members by having Tony Cardenas and Yolanda Fuentes as friends. Her fairness, her honesty, her dedication to her community are just above anyone else. And I wholeheartedly support Yolanda and think that you couldn't find a better candidate. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Martha Cisneros, and I'm here as a resident of Boyle Heights to ask for your support for Yolanda in our community. Thank you.
Good morning, Brisa Sotelo. I am here in support of Yolanda Fuentes. I actually have known Yolanda for about over a year. And I met Yolanda when we were doing our leadership training with HOPE. We have some of the HOPE women here from Hispanas Organized for Political Equality. And it's actually such a great honor to be here in support of Yolanda, because for an entire year, we were working on issues that affect not only women, but the entire city of Los Angeles, our entire state. Those issues having to be with housing, business, education, health care. And those are not only issues of women, again, but it's issues of family and issues that pertain to everybody. So I'm here to support Yolanda Fuentes. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Gustavo Valdivia. Members, good morning. I got the privilege to know Yolanda at a personal level for the last 10 years. And I have witnessed her. A couple of years ago, she and some other folks were walking in the streets of Pacoima, gathering some signatures. But at the same time, they were going to identify the pathways and they're resurfacing, you know. Those who know Pacoima probably know what I'm talking about. And also to identify the alleys, how trashy they are, how, you know. That's what Yolanda will be doing at Public Works Commissioner. She will do that and continue to do that to get the local knowledge to go out there on the third floor and fight for the residents, not only for Pacoima, but also the Boyle Heights and Zino, Pacific Palisades, and everywhere else in the city. So I strongly urge you to support her mayor council nomination. Ms. Fuentes, congratulations.
Zach Giger.
Good morning. My name is Richard Giger Jr. I am a retired person from the United States Army, over 20 years. I am also a retired teacher from San Fernando High School. And I'm looking at the president. That's where he come from. And also compliment Tony Cardenas. Now, I must tell you something. I heard from Yolanda a few days ago. I don't need to tell you what kind of person this is. I have been with her family and her throughout my teaching career. She was my assistant band director. She knows the word "respect." She also knows the word, which is very important to me, "togetherness." I will say to you, a few days ago, and I'm at a kind of a not-good feeling now. I read the communications from the Los Angeles Times, and I wasn't pleased with it. In short, I will tell you this. Don't judge this person and you don't know anything about her. I will say from this council to Sacramento, you must judge her after she has had the opportunity to present herself. And thank you very much.
Let me read a few names here as I hold the clock. Andy Lipkis, Josefina Andrade, Miriam Karasikis, Olga Ayala, Leonor Villuelas.
Good morning, Council members. Thank you. I'm here to speak in support of Yolanda's nomination because, especially because of her experience in the San Fernando Valley and her track record. The city's moving into a very, very important new phase of dealing with infrastructure with Prop O, the Sun Valley watershed being a global model for how to capture clean water, restore our aquifer, and protect the city from floods. That's all in the multiple council districts in the Northeast. We're counting on leadership from Yolanda to help keep that on track and see that project thrive and see the city succeed with Prop O. So we're here to work with her, and thank you.
Somos, nosotros venimos de la Escuela Rosco y somos voluntarios de la Escuela Rosco de un paso, del pasaje seguro, de pasar a los niños. Y conocemos a la señorita Yolanda desde hace como cinco años. Y este, ella es una persona muy, muy este, muy buena. Nos ha ayudado en todo a nosotros a seguir en nuestro programa que tenemos. Y la apreciamos mucho, todo el grupo de pasaje seguro. We're here from Rosco School. We're here to support Ms. Fuentes. We come from a group that helps to cross the children safely, cross the street, and we're here to let you know that we fully support her because we know her very well and we ask for your support as well. She's also supported us a great deal. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm very pleased to be here and I'm happy to be able to support Ms. Yolanda Fuentes. She has been with us. I'm a community rep, and I have seen her in many ways helping our community. She's been a very wonderful piece in our communities because we have learned so much from her, like becoming an active volunteer and active members of our community. She made us feel warm, accepted, and she made us believe that we all can be good and positive to help our community.
Buenos dias. Pues nosotros venimos de San Valley. Somos de la Escuela Rosco. Yo ya no tengo niños en la escuela, pero tengo mis nietos. Good morning. We're here from San Valley, from Rosco School. We don't have children in school, but we do have our grandchildren. Y yo sigo apoyando la escuela, cruzando los niños, y me da mucho gusto que la señorita Yolanda nos siga apoyando en todas las cosas. I continue helping at school, helping the children cross the street safely, and I'm very happy that Ms. Yolanda continues supporting us in all of our issues. Y espero que nos siga apoyando en todo, y muchas gracias. And I hope she continues supporting us in everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Olga Ayala, Debbie Duval, and Ruben Corona.
Good morning. I'm Debbie Duval, and I was going to say you hadn't called my name yet, but I was so eager to get up here and enthusiastically support the nomination of Yolanda Fuentes. I'm a stakeholder in the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, and I represent CD6 on the Cup Board. And I have to say that we went from the strong revitalizing leadership of Cindy Misakowski through redistricting and a period where phone calls were not returned from the council office. And when we were lucky enough to have Tony Cardenas in office, Yolanda came in, hit the ground running, hasn't stopped since. As I'm sure you're all aware, Van Nuys Neighborhood Council has presented many opportunities for solutions, and Yolanda has been there to support us and guide us through as much as possible. So once again, you couldn't have made a better choice in Yolanda Fuentes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker.
I know we run out of time. My name is Ruben Corona, Executive Director of the Mid Valley YMCA. And in the last four years, Yolanda has been the catalyst that has brought the "Y" to connect with the families, the seniors, and the children in the community. And I'm here just to support, and I think you will do a great, great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. We recognize Councilmember Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Council President. I'd also like to appropriately take a point of personal privilege and thank my wife for coming here today and joining us in this room, my wife, Norma. And I think the reason why Norma's here is because we've known Yolanda for many years now. She's been serving the public there in the northeast San Fernando Valley, being my district director for darn near seven years, and she's done a wonderful, wonderful job. I've been approached by many people lately who've said, "Tony, are you crazy? Why are you letting Yolanda go?" Well, the fact of the matter is she's grown, she's a wonderful human being, she's learned so many leadership skills, she really knows how to get things done. And to be frank with you, when Yolanda walks into a room, whether the room is high in volume or everything's going well, it's a much better place when she gets involved and when she leaves the room. And that's one of the reasons why I support Yolanda Fuentes for the Board of Public Works. I'd also like to express to all of you Angelenos, which is, when you see what's going to happen in the next minute, it's going to save us a lot of money. And that is, I'm going to ask Yolanda Fuentes a few questions in Spanish. Yolanda, como encendora del Departamento de Obras Públicas, además de su trabajo como una directora de los departamentos, ¿cuál va a ser su objetivo principal?
Gracias, señor Cardenas. Uno de los objetivos principales mío será de tener la dicha de poder hablar español. Y creo que una de las cosas que tenemos en nuestra ciudad es que la falta de comunicación entre el español y los servicios que se prohíben aquí en la ciudad, debemos que unirlos. Y siendo una persona latina que habla español, voy a trabajar duramente para poder ser la unidad entre los servicios y nuestra comunidad hablispana.
Thank you. I have another question for you as well. ¿Cuál es su experiencia trabajando con la comunidad? And if you could repeat the answer in English as well.
Thank you. Mi experiencia trabajando en la comunidad es, he tenido la dicha de trabajar con elegidos en el Valle de San Fernando por los últimos siete años, y he podido unir nuestros servicios del Estado, tanto los de aquí localmente, con nuestra comunidad y enseñarles cómo pueden aprovechar de los servicios que le están dando gratuitamente aquí en la ciudad. You asked what is my experience for the past seven years. I've had the honor of working not only with you, but our Lieutenant Governor Cruz Bustamante, representing people in the San Fernando Valley. And I've been able to link the services that both our state and local government provide to our community and educate them how they can gain access to those services.
Also, your responsibilities as a Public Works Commissioner expands throughout the city of Los Angeles. How do you feel about working with the entire city of Los Angeles?
I am proud to be from Los Angeles, born in Sun Valley and raised in Pacoima. I look forward to working with my colleagues on the board to provide the best services to the residents of Los Angeles.
Okay. The reason why I mentioned earlier, ladies and gentlemen, that it's going to save us money. Very often, when it comes to public community meetings, there are people that come from all factions and all places of the world and live here in Los Angeles, and they want to know about the services that the city of Los Angeles is here to provide for them. And the fact of the matter is, in many of these meetings, we may have 30%, 70%, 80% of the people speak exclusively Spanish and cannot understand the dialogue that's going on. We do have a wonderful service where we have interpreters and we have those apparatus that people can listen to it in their own language. But the problems happen sometimes when that apparatus is not available. It's really important to have somebody who can soothe their fears, calm them down, and tell them the truth about how we're going to move forward as a city and how we are going to be assisting them. And the reason why I say it saves money is because Yolanda is, I can just picture it because she's done it for me and my community for so many years. She will translate back and forth in English and Spanish. As a matter of fact, she's been my Spanish teacher for the last seven years as well. And in addition to that, it's something that I think is a talent and is a need in the city whenever we can have it. And I must say, one of the reasons why I support Yolanda Fuentes is because this Board of Commissioners has not had a Spanish-speaking person for many, many years. And for the first time, we're going to see that, and I think it's just going to raise the level of the service that's going to be rendered to the entire city of Los Angeles, English-speaking, Spanish-speaking, Korean-speaking, and every part of Los Angeles. Congratulations, Yolanda, and I support your nomination wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, members of the council. As Chairman of the Public Works Committee, we had Ms. Fuentes in our committee the other day. I was one of those people to ask Mr. Cardenas why he was doing this. I think he's crazy. But for the city of L.A., we'll certainly benefit because we have a person now in Public Works that's coming to us and has served in a councilman's district office. And nobody knows better the problems that we deal with in Public Works than anybody that's worked in the councilman's district office, because I think probably 50% to 75% of the requests we get for service come from Public Works. And so we have a person that is going on in the commission that has a tremendous background and knowledge of what goes on in the council office, the needs of the community, and has obviously, from the people that came here today, has a tremendous background in working with community and solving problems. So we wholeheartedly endorsed her appointment, and the committee recommends her appointment today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations, Yolanda. I rise in full support of your nomination today, and congratulations. Our friendship over the last few years has been something that I have very much valued, and I think it speaks volumes that you had so many members of such diverse communities, not only geographical communities, but the environmental community. And certainly, the expectations that people have are going to be very high, as you heard here before, because you're filling some very big shoes. But I know you personally, I know that you can do that. And as much as it's not an either-or thing, I think this is a case where it's an "and." You bring some tremendous skills to this job, and we look forward to, especially around some of the implementation of the Proposition O stuff, really being able to set the bar nationally for how we do that. So you have my fullest support today. Congratulations. I can't think of somebody who's as well-qualified as you are, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Ms. Grohl.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I too, Mr. Smith and Mr. Cardenas, said, "Tony, what are you thinking letting her go? She's fabulous." We've been on opposite sides sometimes, but after that, we have been fast friends, and I respect you tremendously for your capabilities. You are beloved, and not only from the speakers that we heard today, but my staff has particularly enjoyed working with you on common issues and common challenges that we have in our districts that butt one another. And I think you are just one of those rare individuals that has passion, works 24/7, loves what you do, and I do think Tony will miss you quite a bit. But he'll have you close by, and as will the rest of us. I think you'll be an extraordinary Public Works Commissioner, and your ability to deal with some of those issues that we know are so critical to our neighborhoods. Every day, that's what we hear from our constituents, and you have as a district director, about the activities that are in Public Works. So I look forward to working with you. And no special deals for Tony Cardenas, okay? We all get, you know, the equal. But I know you're going to take care of the Valley, so I look forward to that and know that we'll, again, work closely with Tony's office and with you to deal with some of those common concerns in that neighborhood, as well with Mr. Padilla in our East Valley area. So congratulations. I look forward to working with you and are very lucky to have you as a Commissioner.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning. I've known you for a few years now. You were working Sacramento jobs for the state legislature. You're always responsive, always efficient, always friendly, always a big smile, always a big hug, and always getting the big jobs done. I think that you're, and you also called my office and said, "Would I like to meet with you to discuss your appointment to the Public Works Commission?" I said, "That wasn't necessary because I already know your qualifications, your experience, your dedication, and your passion for work and to get the job done." So like many of my colleagues, I support this. I just hope that you can remain in the Valley to help with all the projects that we have working in the Valley. We've had some wonderful representatives from the Public Works and all the Public Works employees that carry out that mission. And then when sometimes there's a stumbling block, we'll call the Commissioner that works our particular district, and we speed it forward to get it done. Street paving, sidewalks, trees, and everything else that is responsible. So congratulations. It's a job that I'm sure you'll do very well in, and there's many people out there who will benefit from your leadership, your experience, your dedication to the people of Los Angeles, in particular what my colleague Tony has experienced. And I've never seen a Commissioner come up for an appointment before, has had so many people come up and speak on behalf and show support. That's very unusual, and it obviously shows you've had a great impact on people. So congratulations. And to the mayor's office, a nice pick. Thank you.
Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to support you on this appointment. The way you approach today's event, I think, is very symbolic. Being able to speak Spanish and English, looking at the areas that I believe you'll be looking over, is going to require that type of communication, where we can speak to all the groups in our city. Especially when we are now dealing with the Prop O efforts, we're dealing with the revitalization of the river. When you look at the makeup of who attends meetings, who has the time, the leisure, who makes the effort, whereas you find those communities who are, parents are carrying two or three jobs, who don't have childcare, who are coming from countries that do not trust authority figures, to be able to pull them into the process is going to be critical. And how we continue to evolve as an international city, understanding this great diversity is so significant. So on that basis alone, I want to thank you for demonstrating symbolically the communication, the approach, and embracing this diversity. If these projects are going to work, if these programs will be successful, we need support of all communities, in all of its shapes, in all of its colors, in all of its languages. And therefore, having a Commissioner who is demonstrating that on the first day is critical. So thank you so much. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you very much. I too rise in support of our nominee here, Yolanda Fuentes. I have the pleasure of having known her for, I don't know how many years, let's not start counting. Wonderful family in Pacoima, just like mine, just like the Cardenas family and others. And I had the honor and privilege of offering her a job when I used to work for Tony Cardenas in the Assembly. Because I knew the community spirit that she held, I knew the dedication to serving people that she and her family really embodies. And I've watched her in the Assembly Office just really learn and grow when it came to state government, when it came to constituent services. As Councilmember Cardenas was elected to the City Council, saw her translate that skillset from a state government capacity to a city government capacity. And it's no surprise to me that somebody who's representing the communities of Van Nuys and Sun Valley and Arlita and some of the other pockets of the Northeast Valley, that Public Works and infrastructure projects are going to be such a big need and are going to constitute such a big part of the demand of constituents calling in and writing and visiting the office. So I think that has proven a tremendous, tremendous training ground for Yolanda to serve in this capacity. It's great for the San Fernando Valley to have another representative on the Public Works Commission, the section of the city that represents 40%, give or take, of the city's population. So it's a wonderful nomination. I think Yolanda is more than prepared and willing to serve. And colleagues, I know last Friday, it was a day of mixed emotions for some when we saw somebody leave the Public Works Commission. All that I can ask of you is that you give Yolanda the same shot at proving herself, the same shot at winning you over and making you a believer and a supporter of hers, just as her predecessors in the Public Works Commission have it. Thank you.
Councilmember Ludlow.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to rise and, first of all, to say on the heels of what Councilmember Padilla just mentioned, that last Friday was a tough day. And I know colleagues, many of us expressed concern and disappointment for the way in which the process happened with asking the last Commissioner to step down. But this appointee, this nominee, didn't create that. She didn't cause that. She didn't ask for that. And I think one of the things that we have to do in this business and this job is make sure that at the end of the day, we're taking care of the taxpayers and that the taxpayers are getting the absolute best that they can. People who I respect, Yolanda, speak so highly of you, people that have spoken here today, who've known you. It's amazing to have an academic colleague or mentor of yours here today to speak personally about your character. I wish you the best. As you know, it's a huge responsibility that you're stepping into. You do it. I know as they do that oath of office without mental reservation or a purpose of evasion, I know that that speaks for you as well. I wish you much luck in this endeavor, and I'm sorry that you have to step in in the heels of what many of us thought was a less-than-above-board process for your predecessor. And I think on behalf of those people that spoke up, we hope that you don't fall victim to the same. We want you to be able to do your job, do it with energy, do it with passion, and we hope that that work results in you being able to continue to do the work that you're being asked to do here today. So I wish you the best, and we'll be here to work with you in any way that I can. And God bless you, and let's get out there and get the work done for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Mr. Veragosa.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Ludlow, for saying that, because a lot of us were very passionate last week, and we were, because we had great problems with the process that occurred with the removal of Cindy Reese as a Commissioner. You should know that none of what we said that day, and your own Councilmember Cardenas spoke that day, none of us were speaking to anything about you. It had something to do with the process, it had something to do with the lack of accountability, frankly, and the lack of commitment to what we believe should be the work. But I know you now for seven years as well. Working with you when you were working for Lieutenant Governor Bustamante, with Councilmember Cardenas, I know how passionate you are about your community, how committed you are to public service. You work hard, and we're very proud of you, and I want to congratulate you on this imminent nomination and support on behalf of the council.
Thank you.
Other members of the council wish to be heard on item 51. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll in confirmation. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll send this item forthwith as well. And Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to say at the conclusion of this vote that just took place, there's going to be a reception across the hall in the Board of Public Works, not paid for at taxpayers' expense, to properly welcome Yolanda Fuentes to the Board of Public Works. Congratulations, Yolanda.
Thank you and congratulations. Mr. Labaj.
Mr. President, could you just ask if anyone's here for the park ranger issue? Item number 52. Anyone fill out a card for that? Just want to check that here.
We do have one card on item 52.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to talk to him just to say hello. Thank you.
Take a look. Let's proceed to the next item. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, do we should take a public comment at this time?
This is general public comment, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. Council calls forward at this time Carlin Moore, followed by Renette McCown. Are you still here? Carlin Moore. Renette McCown. If they're no longer here, then this closes general public comment for today's meeting. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number eight was called social by Councilmember Misakowski.
And I believe this is an airport-related item. Let's hold off on item number eight. Take up items 10, 11, and 12 together. The two are related to the airport. And let me ask Mr. Cardenas to start off.
President Padilla, thank you very much. I'd like to ask that they come forward, Representative Kim Day from the LAWA, and also if someone from the Community Coalition can come forward as well. And also, do we still have the representatives from the two school districts that are intimately involved in this agreement here? If they could come forward as well? Thank you very much. We have just enough seats. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, what we have before us is an opportunity to unveil a process that has occurred between the infamous LAX and many people from the surrounding community. A coalition of organizations and individuals came together and chose to negotiate with LAWA, with LAX, on a plan on how they're going to mitigate issues, a whole litany of issues, such as environmental issues, job issues, inclusion of the community issues, many, many issues that are now settled and now are moving forward. The reason why I mention that is because this is approximately a $500 million commitment on behalf of LAX to the surrounding community, and albeit there are other cities and organizations who are... who are still talking to LAWA and still taking other avenues, we welcome that and we respect that. But today, we're here to talk about this community benefits plan that truly is a work of art. It truly is a work of passion. It truly is an opportunity for us to show that we can handle certain matters without having lawyers take people to court. And the unfortunate part about going to court is lawyers may end up with 20, 30% of what's on the table, and that means that's less resources for the community to mitigate issues that need to be mitigated. Here, we're talking about $500 million or so that are going to go to the community, to the local school districts, to local individuals in the community who choose to participate and want to participate. So with that, I'd like to ask Ms. Kim Day to please outline briefly, for the people of Los Angeles, what this entails.
I'd be happy to do so. Thank you. Well, we are very thrilled to be here today with our partners in the coalition and in the school districts. This is a process that has been going on for a long time. First, I'd like to say that the discussions between LAWA and the coalition were initiated by Mayor Han and his office. They brought us together. Mr. Ritchie and his staff, and Mr. Mingistu of our office have worked long and hard with the coalition to get here. The essential pieces of the community benefits agreement relate to jobs, and they relate to environmental issues. On the environmental side, noise mitigation is a large part of the CBA, air quality study, air quality emissions reductions and control, community-based research studies on air quality, commitment to the green building principles, traffic commitments, and then the job, job training and first source hiring, which many of you know we are doing by utilizing the CDD and the WIB that is in place here in the city. In addition to that, we have agreements with both school districts in Lenox and in Inglewood to do some soundproofing, to do some, basically, upgrading of facilities that were previously soundproofed, and to replace some mobile trailers that cannot be soundproofed, some temporary classrooms, to replace the HVAC system in those schools with pollution abatement. And we're just very pleased to be here today with all these partners to put this on the table for you.
Thank you. Can you, Ms. Day, can you briefly tell us what the reception was in Washington just a couple of weeks ago, when you gave them an overview? Not just you, but coalition's members went as well. People who are on all sides of the table went to Washington. What was the reception, and what was the basic response that they gave you?
Well, we met in Washington as a group, as one, with the FAA Administrator Marion Blakely and some of her staff. First off, I think they were impressed by the coalition and the issues that they put on the table. They were impressed by the partnership between the airport and the coalition. And they ended the meeting by saying that this type of approach, to come together in a partnership with community benefits, they saw as a model that should be used at airports elsewhere, instead of falling into this litigation trap, that they saw this as a positive model for the nation.
So far, it looks as though this mitigation effort should stand the approval of FAA, because they are the ones who oversee this. The reason why they do that is because the FAA has no jurisdiction over the general fund of Los Angeles. They have no jurisdiction over sales tax and property tax in the city of Los Angeles. How many pennies, how many dollars of those categories of funds are going into this?
Absolutely none.
Absolutely none. So this money is coming from where?
This is all airport money and federal money. Either it's through grants we get from the federal government, or money that we, LAWA, make by charging rent and landing fees and our concessions and user fees at LAX.
So senior citizen in Sherman Oaks worried about their property taxes or paying more sales tax shouldn't be concerned negatively about this?
Absolutely no impact.
From that vantage point?
Yes.
Thank you. In addition to that, I'd like to ask that the coalition member present, and also the two representatives from the school districts, please state how you feel about this benefit package.
Excited, very excited. I think this is a great day for the, in the city of Los Angeles, Councilman Cárdenas, because after some nine months of sitting down, not going the route of litigation, not going the route of contrast, of conflict, but going the route of cooperation, of collaboration, and coming together and saying, this is what the community needs, the communities of South Los Angeles, Inglewood, and Lenox. And because the airport is involved, even though other communities were not at the table, a lot of the things that have been mitigated, a lot of the things that have been decided are going to affect them also, like end-of-the-block soundproof. That will affect all the communities around the airport. And so we are real excited, because this is not only a historic, largest community benefits agreement that has ever been negotiated in the country. And I think the cooperation between the city, the airport, and the coalition, LAX Coalition for Economic, Environmental, and Educational Justice can be proud of what we have done on behalf of the community. The groups are not necessarily going to benefit, but other community groups will benefit from what we've done. And so this is a landmark that we're excited about. I would like all of those members of the coalition that are here to please stand in the back, all the members of the...
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Trini Jimenez. I'm the School Board President in the Lenox School District. As many of you know, the Lenox community is unincorporated LA County, and the only form of elected government is the school district. I'm here to express our unanimous support as a school district, on behalf of my colleagues on the board, for this community benefits agreement, and to also express our unanimous gratitude to you as the city of Los Angeles, to this council, for doing the right thing, to having the courage and the vision and the leadership to move forward with this, and to do the right thing for the surrounding communities in and around the airport. Just a special word of thanks to some of you who worked with us, took the time out of your busy schedules in the last year to meet with us and go so far as to come out to our community to see the impacts firsthand. I'd like to begin with the mayor. Mayor James Han was instrumental in this with the Chair of the Commerce Committee, Councilmember Tony Cárdenas. Thank you for your leadership. Councilwoman Janice Han, Councilwoman Cindy Miskowski, Councilwoman Wendy Grill, and Council President Alex Padilla. On behalf of the Lenox School District and the constituents we represent in the Lenox community, this is a very historic day, and it will have an impact for many years to come, a very positive impact. And we thank you for the leadership you're exercising today, and we ask for your support.
Two points, Mr. Jimenez.
Yes.
First of all, I'd like to let the public know, you mentioned three members of the Commerce Committee, which is a quorum. We were never out there at the same time. And then, secondly, could you please, for the edification of the public, for them to understand what LAWA's commitment is to your school district? What is the magnitude of the dollar amount that they put on the table for you?
Well, the magnitude of the dollar amount is great. It's historic. The dollar figure of $111 million is very historic, because it will allow us to soundproof classrooms. It will allow us to do so many things that will directly impact the education of over 7,500 children, very directly in a positive fashion. And so I'd also like to give a word of thanks to the staff over at LAWA for their professionalism, for working with us this past year. Truly, they are to be commended.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Bruce McDaniel, Superintendent with the Lenox School District, and I would certainly say ditto to Reverend Smart's comments and President Jimenez's comments. Additionally, I'd like to try to give a comment in terms of the scale or magnitude of this settlement. This morning, at the very beginning of the meeting, when we had a presentation to an individual, I believe it was Mr. Garcetti, who said, "This is a person who changed people's lives." And this action literally will change the lives, right now, of 7,500 students in the Lenox School District. But it's not just for this year. It's for their entire educational career, and for the students that follow them, some of whom will be their children. Because in our community, it's very stable, and we see generations go through. So this is an agreement that will affect positively generations of children going through the Lenox School District, and we're very, very grateful.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is William D. Smart, Jr. I'm the Senior Organizer for the Los Angeles Alliance for the New Economy.
And you're a Reverend, correct?
Yes, I'm a Reverend for 33 years.
Thank you very much. Looks like you brought everything to the table on this negotiation.
Yes.
And I'm glad you did. Also, I'd just like to take a moment to thank all of the staff at LAWA, and all of the people behind the scenes who made sure that the commitment was there, the resources were there, and that you brought it to fruition, because a lot of people doubted that it even could be done. So this is a monumental moment. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I too want to thank everyone at the table, and just reinforce what is being done here. This morning in committee, I read the names of the entities that are part of this coalition. And just, I won't read them again here today. But the name of this coalition is the Coalition for Economic, Environmental, and Educational Justice. And participating in it were a number of entities that exist separately. And they could have all come separately and knocked on the door of LAWA and tried to do things, and some might have gotten a little further than others. But instead, these groups came together. And as you hear today, they represent not only the two independent and separately-elected school districts, which were dealing with the educational issues, they represent an array of community organizations, which are based just including the Community Coalition and others who are part of, including ministerial alliances, and people of faith-based organizations and other community organizations. Then they represented a slew of environmental organizations. And among those environmental organizations, there are the ones with names we would recognize: Coalition for Clean Air, Communities for Better Environment, the Natural Resources Defense Council. And then in addition to that, they pulled together under this umbrella a number of labor unions. So each one of those could have had separate paths, separate processes, and instead, they came together and said, "Let us begin to bargain together." Arguably, there was might in numbers. But more importantly, there was might in the array of issues that needed to be addressed, on the educational, the economic, the environmental, and the labor side. Part of this also includes project labor agreements. But mostly, I think, and I really appreciated the comments of the school administrator, talking about, the effect of this is not just for today, not just for the life of this master plan, but for lifetimes to come. Not only for the schools, and the schools that will be better learning environments, but for the quality of our air that everybody coming through or near anywhere on the West Side in LAX are going to have as a consequence of being improved because of the environmental work that is being done here, and the homes that are going to be soundproofed. The job training that is going to go on as a part of this, and Mr. Cárdenas worked with our Community Development Department and the Workforce Investment Boards, the groups we talked about today. The jobs that are going to be available through, not just available, but making the extra effort to go through with job training, with the apprenticeships to the unions, those too are going to be with people, not just for the life of this project, but because their careers and lives will be changed by giving not just an entry-level job, but a good-paying job, and a career that will serve a lifetime. This really, really is a historic moment. And LAX is really a model for change, a model for improvement, a model for community investment, and that a number of these groups have been groups in other arenas, been here suing the city, litigating issues. And instead, that they are here today, when I thank not only the members who are here at the table, but I thanked actually our city attorney and the outside counsel who are working on this. The room at the committee broke out into applause, and we don't normally applaud attorneys. But the work that is here, so this is legal, this is binding, this is meant to be the future of good neighbor, good relationship, stakeholder participation, that the community benefits agreement that we can bring here today under these three separate proposals for the three separate entities makes a lot of sense, and I ask the council to support it wholeheartedly.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to congratulate my colleague, Councilman Cárdenas, for his due diligence in committee and the stamina, on behalf of all of you, to get to this point. But I do want to focus on this notion of jobs. For a few years now, since I've been a councilman, I've been talking about first-source hiring. How do we use the economic engines of our city to promote jobs for, entry-level jobs for our youth, people in our communities that are living at or below poverty? Half of the communities in my district are in that condition. And I can probably say the same for two or three other districts that are suffering the same type of pressures. My question to you is very direct and blunt. How do I know that these respective districts are receiving jobs for their constituents, given the poverty levels of these different areas? And I don't want to take away anything from the county cities or the non-city valet locations, but I want to know, how do I, as elected representative for CD1, those represent 8, 9, 10, 13, 14, I mean, we have high levels of poverty. How does this project impact us, and how do I know about it? How do I get notified? And how do we make sure it's happening?
Actually, I think we have a representative of CDD here who could go into detail. But in general, I will tell you that we, the reason we are using CDD is that they do have a program already established and know how to run a program such as this, because we, LAWA, are not in the business of creating jobs. There are two parts to the jobs program. The first part is really CDD using the existing, I'm going to let CDD talk for themselves. I'm sorry.
You're doing a great job. Thank you, Councilman Reyes. We're going to be using our whole worksour system and our youth system to be a part of this project. We've been working with the airports right now, that any new jobs that are created at the airports are going to come to our system first. We're going to have a two-week period that we're going to be able to put it out to our system, citywide. And our two priority populations is the first population is those within the targeted area. The second population is the hard-to-serve population throughout the city, which includes the low-income, as well as the older youth, out-of-school, out-of-work population, among other hard-to-serve.
So if I wanted to send a congratulatory letter to each beneficiary in our districts, I'd be able to identify that person?
Yes, sir.
And I'd be able to understand exactly how their career opportunities are beginning to develop at that point?
Yes, sir. We'll be able, we're going to be able to track not only where the jobs are available, but who's filling the jobs, and at what rates that they're starting their career at.
And if there were to be an organization that might emerge that's not part of this list, do we have that flexibility?
Right now, all of our worksour system is going to be a part of this project by virtue of being a part of the system. Any additional contracts that will come out in terms of the training, we would follow our procurement process, RFPs and such.
Mrs. I want to congratulate you, CDD, and everyone here, because we need to create that relationship between our economic engines. The airport is a significant one. And I'll keep saying it until I'm blue in the face. We got to make it happen. We got to build that confidence. And we need to be able to congratulate and thank not only the beneficiaries, but those providers as well. So I'm looking forward to that information, so that we know how this is actually impacting our areas. And I want to thank you for not forgetting about my constant pounding on the table about first, our first-source hiring programs. Thank you very much.
If I could just add one other thing to give you a little more confidence that this is just not something we're putting on the table here. We have made the commitment. We have created a new position at the airport. We have created a Deputy Executive Director of Quality Control who is going to oversee all of the commitments we have made to the CBA, as well as all of our other environmental mitigations in the EIR/ES. And I'm really thrilled that I can tell you today that Patty Tubert has accepted this position. So she will be the point person who will oversee to make sure that we indeed make good on the commitments we are making here to you and to the community today.
Well, thank you again for all your hard work.
Mr. Chairman, to further, Ms. Dent, our economic chair can answer some of that other question for you.
Let me just add to what both, with Robert Sainz has said. We want to work as the coalition not only to have the agreement in place, but to make sure that those types of organizations that work specifically as advocates for this, for the underemployed, for the offenders, for those coming off of welfare, that they get in the system as well, so that when outreach occurs, they know where the people are. They've worked with them over time to get them prepared to take on new roles as workers, contributors to society. So what we've done in designing this outreach program, and this workforce investment program, is to use the existing systems, but to make it available so that we can bring community groups that are not on the list now, but that have a history in these communities, bring them in and get them eligible to be contracted to provide a service, to ensure that the residents get fully into the pipeline, come through the pipeline with some case management, and that when they're placed on the job, that there's some support behind them, childcare, transportation, just general working issues, that they receive help resolving to make sure that they stay on the job. That's the key.
So we will be able to see a quarterly report, a monthly report? What's going to be the mechanism of communicating? What's going to be the mechanism of communication?
Yeah. There are timely reports, annual and then quarterly reports of performance of the program, vendors, as well as performance of employees as they go out.
Looking forward to those results. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I just wanted to rise in support and really in admiration of this process. This morning in Commerce Committee and over the last several months, we have continued to hear the updates and the constant message, which was, "We're still working some things out. Everyone's staying at the table. We have a few things we haven't worked out yet. We're going to go back to Washington, D.C. on behalf of the community." And I will say, this morning in Commerce Committee, the coalition was using words like, "LAWA is our friend. We are not adversaries." And even Kim made a comment that we've made friends along the way. And I just think we cannot miss this moment in Los Angeles in terms of probably what is such an amazing project that we will be embarking on, which is, of course, the modernization of the L.A. International Airport. To not miss the fact that we have this incredible community benefits agreement. And again, I've said this before, but coming from the harbor area, we use words there like "100-year war" with the Port of Los Angeles. And in fact, the only time money sometimes would get spent was because of litigation. So there is a different feeling. I think things are changing now at the Port of Los Angeles. I really give credit to the mayor for that. I give credit to the mayor for this process. But I just don't think we can miss this. And I really want to thank LAWA staff. I think you have been really so admirable in how you have approached this. And I want to thank the coalition and all of you who stayed at the table. And as was mentioned today, you know, we've heard in this council chambers, people were claiming that they had not been a part of the process, or they had been left out, or they were not invited to participate. But we heard loud and clear this morning that everyone was invited to participate and continually invited to participate. But sometimes it's easier to leave the table and then to criticize and to throw stones at the process. And I think staying at the table has resulted in just such a monumental agreement. And again, I love what the superintendent of the Lenox School District talked about today and also in committee, that, you know, we cannot underestimate the change of lives that this community benefit agreement will afford, not only in job training and hopefully job placement, cleaner air, traffic mitigation, but we're going to grow up a generation of kids that will be different than the previous generations, even their parents, who suffered from the negative impacts of the airport operations on their health and on their ability to really even be in school and get the kind of education that a lot of people take for granted. The studies are in. There is a relationship between airport noise and the ability to concentrate and learn a lesson. And I love it that we are going to grow up a generation of kids that will not have to suffer from that. And I don't know if we will ever, those of us alive today, will ever truly be able to see firsthand the difference that this will make. But I just really want to congratulate all of you and say, it has been really interesting to watch and participate in from the council perspective. And I think this will be a model, not just for airports. I think this will be a model for how we move forward in this world, in this city, in this state, in this country, and begin to realize that there is quality of life issues that are affected by everything we do. And if we can stay at the table with the right people, we can form something that certainly is an economic benefit to the region, but certainly improves, not just doesn't negatively impact, but actually improves people's lives as a result of that. Congratulations to all of you. It's just an amazing part of this entire LAX modernization plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. With this end, Mrs. Day, on the issue of the airport, if I understood from the last meeting, that none of this has been approved by the FAA as far as the coalition or the benefit package?
It has not been approved yet. We went and submitted it to the FAA. We were very encouraged by their comments, but we do not have an official approval.
What is our alternative if they say no?
They actually offered that if there were elements in this that they couldn't agree to, they would try and work with us to find other ways to mitigate the items.
Okay. When they say that, is it funding, or did they give an idea of what they would do to mitigate?
No, they did not give any idea.
If I understood on the intern program, that if they don't fund that, is that going to go back to our CDD money, our block grant money? Or how does that get funded?
No, sir. We would be using our WIA funds.
So the web funds?
Web funds, yes.
Okay. So that would be city resource money if they don't come through, or where does that money come from?
No. Right now, because any job opportunities, our most difficult time that we have, especially for our young people, is finding job opportunities. So this will be placement opportunities, it'll be a benefit to the grants of having this.
And, Ms. Day, I was wondering if you're the, I guess, final arbiter, if the coalition comes forward and fails in any of their obligations, then it's up to you or your commission to invoke that failure? And then what is the next step if that should occur?
I should have asked the city attorney to comment on that.
Claudia Cullings, City Attorney's Office. The cooperation agreement, which is a part of the agreement that we have with the coalition, has an entire enforcement mechanism in it, where there are, there's mediation and steps before we would call some kind of default.
I mean, if a default, one of the issues is not to sue. If they sue, what would be our obligation or our response?
Well, there's a, we've stated in the agreement that there are procedures where they have so many days to cure that default by dropping their lawsuit. Otherwise, our obligations under the agreement are terminated.
Does that come back to council if that should occur? Is that done locally?
No. No, that would be done by the board.
By the board?
Or LAWA.
Okay. How would the council be aware of that?
Well, my guess is that there would be annual reports to council. Haven't you already indicated that you intend to, I think, LAWA has already indicated that they intend to report to council the progress of the entire community benefits agreement and the agreements with the school on a regular basis.
But that could be after the fact, as it relates to what the actions of the board?
Yes, I think it would on a regular basis.
Okay. All right. The one thing, Reverend Smart, I just wanted to know, we talked before and had a meeting with you. Do you live in the city of L.A.?
Yes, sir. I do.
Is it 8th District?
No. I currently now live in Sidney Miskowski's district.
And I think when we met with you and we expressed the concern about particularly the 8th District residents and neighborhood councils and block clubs were omitted from this coalition?
What happened at that time is we went back to three of those councils and we met with them, and we stopped. One of their protocols that we had established is that in March, we could not bring anything new to the table. However, after we had the meeting with you and Councilwoman Jan Perry, we met with LAWA and we said, "We need to open that up." We went back to those three councils, those neighborhood groups in your district, and any new issues they raised that we did not already have, we were allowed to bring them to the table. However, with all the issues they raised, there weren't anything new. But from that process, two of your, two of the presidents got involved continuously, James Harris and Frank Prather, and from two separate neighborhood councils in your district.
Okay. And I think last time we brought this up, you said that we asked you about why they didn't get a chance to participate, and you told me that you thought it was elected officials were being asked. Now you're telling me that they were part of it?
No, no. At the, in the very beginning of the organizing, I simply said that we had reached out to them. We reached out through the Community Coalition, and the Community Coalition came to the table. And we thought we had a lot of them, which we did, but we wanted to get, after meeting with you, we wanted to be very specific about those neighborhood groups. And then LAWA got involved, and they started having meetings in those, with those neighborhood groups. And I went to those meetings also.
Did they ever become a part of your coalition?
Yes. They didn't officially, they became, they wrote a letter of, one wrote a letter of support, Frank Prather's group, the others constantly advised us, and they've been involved in the process.
Were they a voting member of your coalition?
I think what happened when we established that because of some law, I heard that they are a city entity, they could not necessarily be a member like that. So they became advisors. They advised us all along the way.
Okay. But how did you pull together the committee at first? Because what we were concerned with is, most of them were not city entities or city organizations or represent city residents.
Well, they were. One of the ways we did is, we looked through the EIR also of those organizations that responded. We took what the 8th District's response to the EIR was, and those, and we expressed it with somebody in your office at the time, that those became a lot of the issues from the 8th, is what you had put in your EIR response.
But we were concerned about the people that created that response having a role.
They had a role. And in fact, at the last community meeting we had over there, we were, there was a lady that was, we wanted to be a liaison who was on your task force. She called me back, and she was, she told me she was waiting to hear from your office, but evidently she never did, because she really wanted to be. So the Community Coalition and James Harris's group kept her informed anyway, because she's on their board.
Well, let me just say, colleagues, my impression is a little bit different than yours, that we reached out to the community. They've been a victim of the airport and often are not a part of the discussion, because generally Lenox and Inglewood and El Segundo monopolize the discussion. But residents of the 8th District took an active role and put forth a report. It took, I think, almost a year for airport to respond back to them. And then we came to the coalition saying, "We really would like to have people from the 8th District a part of it." And not as a liaison, not as a resource, but actually physically participate in the discussion, because many of the same issues that we discussed about jobs, about the noise, were vital to them. And each time, we were told that they could not participate. And so that's what we got as a message.
Well, we had the Community Coalition, we had the Nation of Islam, we had --
But those were not people that were part of the community report?
And we had, and we had the people from, like I said, the neighborhood council, who really directed us. And in fact, just as recently as last week, one of those people is going to be featured in the article, because the sound, she's saying how the sound change to the end of a block is affecting her, because now her neighbor had it, and now she will be able to have it through the CBA program. And I mean, Mr. Harris from your neighborhood council got that person for us, Mr. Councilman. So we did take your directions. We did go to them. We did sit down. They did give our coalition directions. But it was a technical legality why those neighborhood groups could not be a part of them, that you had. But like I said, we have letters of, we have one letter from Frank Prather's organization supporting it.
I think the concern we have in the 8th District is that when you created the coalition, you didn't outreach and bring them in. And then later, they may not have been a part of a technical violation, would eliminate them as an organizational entity, but certainly should not eliminate them as an individual that lived in the city.
But however, through the process, their voice was heard, their voice, they did get into it.
Their answer to you, and I think you mentioned "we, the people" last time, their answer that they've related to me is, it's another issue of people outside the community telling them what they need. And I think that's what the real issue comes down to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Our next speaker is Mr. Vieragosa.
Yes, I guess this question is for the, Kim. If you can share with me, when we were here, I guess, when this matter was first raised to the council on the community benefit package, can you share with us what that number, that proposed number was back then?
The proposed number for the whole package, which is --
No, talk about the jobs package and...
Originally, when we came here, we were saying a million a year for five years. We have now increased that to 3 million a year for five years.
Yes. So about $10 million more.
Right. And that, and let me just say, that's just part of the jobs program. That's just the money that is going to flow through the CDD.
Right.
There are other requirements in the jobs program for all contractors that are going to do work as part of the master plan. They also will have a commitment to the jobs program.
Well, as you know, I opposed the LAX plan, because I believe that we put all of our airport capacity at one airport, and we will essentially make it worse for people to drive on the 405 in West Los Angeles and not spread out airport capacity. But one of the issues I also raised back then was the issue of a community benefits package that really was significant, given the kind of investment. And while I still think we could do better than 3 million a year, this, I think, is an indication that we're moving in the right direction. And the reason why I will support the community benefits package, because from the very beginning, my concern was, there just wasn't enough investment and mitigation to address the kind of, you know, infrastructure that we're putting there at LAX. So thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you, Mr. Vieragosa. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
If we may, we have one technical correction that the city attorney would like to read into the record.
Please, Madam City Attorney.
I just want to clarify that although the agenda refers to exemption, that in fact, the EIR for the master plan is the environmental support for this action that you're being asked to take today.
Okay. Thank you. Duly noted. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, do you wish to vote on each item separately, or do you wish to take 10, 11, and 12 together?
It is the bodies choosing separately. We have a motion for separate. Okay. If there's no objection, we will take them individually. Let's take the first one.
First one is item number 10.
Okay. Please open the roll on item 10. Sorry, would you like explained what it is, each one? Okay. If you can just detail, Madam Clerk, what item 10 is. Excuse me, Mr. Weiss?
Are we just, we were 10, 11?
We're just looking at 10, 11, and 12. Ms. Miskowski, would you like to?
Point of order, the only reason there are three is there are two separate agreements, one with the Inglewood School District, one with the Lenox School District, and then one with the whole rest of the community-based coalition. So it's the same document individually executed by the legitimate entities that can execute it for those. So it's all exactly the same.
Mr. Weiss, Mr. Vieragosa, are you okay as a package then? Are you okay taking them together? Yep? Or would you still like them to be separate? Separate? Mr. Parks? Okay. If there's no objection, we will take them separately. So number 10, Madam Clerk.
Okay. The first one is for the community benefits agreement with LAX, Coalition for Economic, Environmental, and Educational Justice.
Okay. Please open the roll on item 10. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes, 1 no.
Okay. That is passed. Item 11?
Okay. Item 11 is an agreement between the city of L.A. and the Lenox School District.
Okay. This is the Lenox-specific one, colleagues. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved.
Okay. And item number 12 is settlement agreement between the city and Inglewood School District.
Okay. On item 12, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved as well. Okay. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do we should take up 8 at this time? That was called special by Councilmember Miskowski.
Thank you.
Let us take up item 8, Ms. Miskowski.
And I would also like 11, 12, and 13 to go forth with, without any objections.
Okay. We'll move those forthwith.
Item 8, members, the only reason I called this special is because it is somewhat historic. I think it will be the last vote that we will take on the LAX master plan and the entirety. I thought it was appropriate to have the community benefit agreements discussed first, because those had been a piece that hadn't been finalized until the board acted and until we took this extra time since October. Item 8 today is the final vote on the three ordinances, the zone changes, other zoning considerations, and specifically, the LAX-specific plan, which sets forth how the master plan can and will be implemented. And again, members, the LAX-specific plan is important, because it's the element that says, "We, the city council, are now going to be an important part of it." It's not that we have signed it off and the board of Airport Commission is going to control it. The decisions, the approval of each project in the plan have to come back to the council, have to have the reports that the council has been concerned about in the, not only the community benefit packages and the other mitigations, but the stakeholder liaison. How do the stakeholders in and around LAX, outside of the community benefits agreement, feel that LAX is continuing, and how is each project in terms of being measured? So I asked for an aye vote. It is the final ordinances. We voted first reading last week. We voted first reading last week, but I would like to ask for an aye vote again today on the ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Vieragosa?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you, members. Again, when you look at this proposal, what's absolutely clear is that we're putting $11 billion of infrastructure at one airport. We're going to ensure that the 405 is in a gridlock situation 24/7. We're going to add more traffic to the West Los Angeles. We're not going to do anything to address the issue of airport capacity, a need that we have. We need to support a regional approach to airport capacity, where the growth is in the North County at Palmdale, on the east in Ontario. We need to invest in a regional transportation and for those reasons, I am opposing this measure. I do believe the community benefits package is an improvement. I support the investment of infrastructure, but across the a regional system and not just at LAX.
Thank you, Mr. Vieragosa. Our next speaker is Mr. Parks, to be followed by Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise opposed to the plan as I spoke at the last meeting. The fact that we're going to spend $11 billion and not deal with regionalization, the fact that the gate management is in phase two as opposed to phase one, our awareness that in dealing with this plan, that FAA has not approved not only the community benefit package on it, but also to know that the yellow light projects are not projects that we can be assured that will not be built. And if they're not built, we have the dilemma of whether those mitigations in the yellow light project will hamper the projects overall as it relates to its being built. The security plan at LAX by RAN said was deficient. The environmental part of it, I believe, is deficient. I think the litigation will cause us not to get anything built for a long period of time. When we have the county of Los Angeles sitting on the edge of their seat waiting to sue the city of LA, we'll spend our money in litigation as opposed to what we should be doing is developing a regional airport system amongst our four airports, a regional ground system amongst our four airports, so that we can actually tell people that live in the San Fernando Valley, there's no need to drive to Los Angeles LAX. People that live in Moreno Valley, there's no need to come to LAX. There's other airports out there. And that we should also be looking at ways that we can address the issues at Van Nuys Airport as we look at the airports as one system. And then eventually, at some point in time, with an airport authority that will basically address issues in the six counties, we can then have places such as El Toro and other places in Orange County, Long Beach, to take up the load of air travel that this city is now absorbing for them. I thought it was very interesting, last meeting we had, so many people were applauding us for taking on an expanded airport project while they were silent in their own city when they had an opportunity to build another airport in Orange County. And so these are things that I think that we need to look at for our own benefit. None of us would want to drive down Sepulveda Boulevard if this plan goes through. There's no way we can control 78 million passengers and it's clear the FAA is not going to allow us, no matter how much rhetoric that we control that, unless we disperse the traffic amongst our airports. So I'm going to vote no again on this because it's not in the best interest of the city. And again, as somebody reported, I think, the Daily News, we're going to spend $11 billion, the same amount of money K-Mark is spending on a worldwide Sears and Roebuck industry. That's what we intend to spend in one area and we're going to spend a lot more than that as time goes on and as litigation continues.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Our next speaker, Mr. Labange, to be followed by Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just rise to support this. And I think you're members a little off on the 11 billion because I believe what is phased in this is a $3 billion project. Is that correct? Not 11 billion?
3 billion is the value of the green light project.
Value of the green, and that's what we're doing. Uh huh. I understand that. But as it progresses, but I just wanted to say from a regional standpoint and my colleagues who I respect, we have had a regional, but we've missed opportunities in the past. And now we've taken up the challenge, thanks to the leadership of Cindy Missakowski, to bring something forward. Because I will remind you, when Lockheed Airport closed down in North Hollywood, there was an opportunity of Los Angeles World Airports to be part of that authority. From my history gathering, that was a possibility, but there was a councilman here who rejected it, who rejected that authority. We could have been part of that. We had vision and foresight to take over the Ontario operation. And I believe it was Cal Hamilton who was so involved with buying the 36,000 acres for Palmdale, which is a future possibility here. Members, I want to make sure we do something soon because the safety that is so important to those who fly in and out of Los Angeles, to those who come to. And also on issues related to traffic, and Mr. Parks, you make a very good point about the San Diego freeway and you make very good points about other options in that area. We have to deal with it and I'm pushing on the MTA board to deal with those issues and I'm proud that the green line is going to be looked at at Century and Aviation to be a walk, walk platform, walk platform, ride off. And also the other thing I'm very important that I think you talked about World Airports and what they're doing is the structures of parking for park and ride throughout the region, which is so important to give people those options. I just think it's real important for the safety that we don't hesitate at all. And I thank those who've been involved from the staff level. Jim and Kim, I thank you both, as well as our city attorney for your look at everything, Claudia on that. And I just want to say it's very important that we move forward on this for what Los Angeles stands for, what it stands for in the future. And yes, there is a regional plan. And there is a regional plan that exists right now. There will be more regional discussions, but we can't wait because I don't want to have a situation out there that would harm anyone, that harm anyone because the airplanes are too close to each other, that harm anyone because the buildings are not built the way they are to modern standards. And also, I thank each and every one of you and for those who have to travel, to travel safely. And thank you for LAX coming this forward. We got to push ahead. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, and I want to concur with what Mr. Labange was just saying. I think it was important to get those facts out because news media has really done a disservice to the people of Los Angeles by not telling the facts. So the facts are, this is how much of the project, the green lighted?
3 billion.
And none of the yellow light projects can go forward until this council reviews them again as individual projects.
Correct.
So the actual project is $3 billion. And more importantly, that money's not coming from the general fund of the City of LA.
That's correct.
It's not coming from property tax owners. It's coming from users of the airport.
Yes.
And revenues that are generated at the airport. What percentage of the people that go through LAX are LA city residents? Do you have any idea of that?
I don't know that, but about 50% of our traffic is regional. It is, it's not people transferring from Chicago to LAX to Japan. It is people who actually starting in their trip here.
I think those are important things to know that, you know, this is this airport expansion is being paid for by people that use the airport, not the general taxpayers, the City of LA. It's not a tax increase to anyone. It's not a property tax. It's the users and the funds generated from the airport. And more importantly then, to answer the transportation question, can you spend money from airport revenues off-site for transportation improvements to the 10 corridor?
No, we cannot.
To the 14, to Palmdale?
No, we cannot.
The things we need to be doing to open Palmdale require transportation plans. That money cannot come from airport revenue by federal law, correct?
That's correct.
And so we say we have a transportation problem at LAX. LAX can't solve that problem because federal law prohibits it, correct?
That's correct.
I think that's a very important thing that people have to understand is that we have handcuffs on us when it comes to dealing with these larger issues and a SCAG and other entities that have to deal with those transportation issues and MTA. But we have taken an important step by bringing now under the recent approval and Mr. Labange's leadership, we're going to bring the green line into the airport, which it finally will connect. You've doubled, as I recall, Van Nuys Park and Ride or more than doubled.
The flyway. Yes, in fact, for christening it Friday.
Very good. And we're opening up other ones around the area as well. We're trying to connect all the airport systems. So we're doing what we can within the law to provide transportation to cut down the impacts at LAX, is that correct?
Yes, we are.
And we can't do anything legally more than that. Is that correct?
We think we're doing all we can.
Okay, I think that's very important to understand. And finally, as far as the development of the other airports, we are in the process of doing the master plans on those airports. Is that right?
All three of our other airports.
All three of them. So we're doing everything we can within our system to look at demand for future growth of the entire system and reading, meeting the regional problems of LAX.
That's correct.
I think those are important elements to get on the record and I wish the news media would tell that story because that's the true story, not the campaign story, not the polka story, nor the editorial story. That's the facts. Jack.
Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
I like that. That's the fact, Jack. Jack Webb, Adam 12. Adam 12, great. Takes me back to my youth, Adam 12, dragging it. I also want to join my colleagues, not belabor the point at 12:20 in the afternoon. Reminds me of a wait at LAX to try and go through the screening so I can go to the refreshment stand and wait a couple hours for my flight. It's necessary. We are not going to stop the population growth. We're not going to stop people traveling. We encourage that. We encourage business. We encourage the cargo to be transported. And all we do by not moving forward is create greater, greater delays for the traveling public, more frustration for the traveling public. We know that Thanksgiving is a major rush at the airport and anyone who traveled know it was gridlock going in, gridlock going out. As the Christmas season comes around, we're going to find the same situation. So all we do is inconvenience people. We can't put up the chain link fence and say you can't go into LAX. The line will just get longer and longer and longer. So it's a necessity. This region is growing. The projections are we're going to get millions of more people in this region in the next few years. We need to accommodate them. If we can't develop all the housing, we need to do something to get people in and out of this region. And LAX is a airport that has been renovated a few times. This is going to be a major transformation to make it the world-class. Because I've heard we're a world-class city, the '84 Olympics, and we think that the '84 Olympics was a big deal and it was. And now we're looking 20 years down the road and what's going to happen in the next 20 years for Los Angeles? I know this airport expansion, this airport modernization renovation isn't going to happen overnight. It's going to take a long time to happen. But just as the prop planes came and went, larger aircrafts coming and we need to accommodate for the passengers, the traveling public. So I wholly, wholeheartedly support it. I know we've been belaboring and debating and discussing for a long, long time. It's finally time to put the hammer down and say, move forward, get it done for all the people that utilize the airport. Make it convenient, make it safe, make it efficient. And congratulations, Kim, your patience is wonderful. And I see you, is LAX still playing on television?
No, unfortunately, it was canceled.
They canceled this?
Yes, very sad.
Well, they canceled that. We're not going to cancel you. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Are the members of the council wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Let's hold the roll open to allow all members an opportunity to vote. Let us close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 3 noes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please, on this item. Let's proceed to the next item.
Item number 13 was called special by councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss.
If I could have the airport staff at the table to just tell us a little bit about who wants to do it. If I have the airport staff as well. Whether or not you're a constituent, that's fine. Nice to see you, Ms. Hall. Tell us precisely what the firm has been doing up to now on the master plan. Tell us precisely how much money is being sought now in connection with the master plan and tell us precisely what that money, for what that money will be used. Whoever wants to take away.
Before you, you have the board action on the latest amendment to the Akin Gump, James Giacaris contract. And in that contract, we're asking for an additional $2.2 million for the end of this fiscal year and next fiscal year. No, calendar year, I'm sorry. The end of this calendar year and next calendar year.
Let's back up. How much has been spent so far on this particular contract and generally describe what it's been spent on?
Okay, let me start, let me give you sort of an overview to begin. Lawa has spent approximately $125 million in the planning and environmental phases without legal fees for the master plan. The full master plan implementation, as you've heard, is about approximately $11 billion without the cost of land acquisition mitigation measures or the $500 million community benefits package. Since 1996, outside counsel has been involved in this master plan process and Lawa has spent approximately, remember, no city funds have been spent for any of this legal...
Public funds, but they are public funds.
Public funds, but they're all airport funds. Approximately 9.7...
But I still, I care because they're public funds.
Pardon me?
They're public funds.
I've said they're public funds. Approximately $9.7 million over the last year have been spent on a legal contract, outside counsel.
9.7 million in a year?
Over the last eight years.
Eight years, okay.
That's about 7.7% of the overall costs that Lawa has been involved in. In terms of what the Akin Gump particularly has done, in all of those, I can give you a general sense. I'm sure Carla Hall, who's here for Akin Gump, can give you a more specific sense.
My question is really prospective about going forward. So eight, what was the number, 9.7 or 8.7? I'm sorry.
9.7 million is what we, what Lawa has spent so far since 1996.
2.2 million in addition to that.
For this contract. And also, we want you to know that BoAC yesterday approved 1.5 million for another legal, two legal contracts for outside counsel involving the master plan. One which will be, a good deal of it will be spent on rates and charges and financing the master plan, issues involving that. This 2.2 million, one more thing and then I'll let you ask all your questions. This 2.2 million does not include litigation, although the 1.5 that BoAC acted on yesterday probably will. This is what's necessary to complete what we're doing in the processing of the environmental, assisting the FAA in processing the record of decision and in preparing, doing pre-litigation work. And so probably if there is litigation filed, we may come back to you with needing additional resources when these are expended.
Maybe I could ask Mr. Hall then, when Ms. Burge says that the money is not being spent on litigation per se... Yeah.
Jerry, that's Jerry. This is Claudia.
Ms. Cullen.
Now, she wouldn't appreciate it. That's the only reason I have to...
I didn't eat breakfast today, Ms. Cullen, and I apologize. Touche. When Ms. Cullen says that the 2.2 million is not being spent on litigation, I assume nonetheless that the work is being performed in anticipation of litigation and with an eye towards reducing exposure during litigation.
Very definitely, yes.
So how integral, in your view, is this 2.2 million dollars towards the eventual anticipate, towards protecting your client against the eventual anticipated litigation here?
Well, I think that the 2.2 million is, would be critical to protecting against litigation, both on the master plan and as the master plan is being implemented on the various component pieces. The South Runway, for example, would be the first piece that goes through this process.
When we're told that this does not include a request for litigation funds, what does that mean, Ms. Day, Ms. Cullen, Mr. Hall? Does that mean that if a lawsuit's filed tomorrow, you would automatically come forward and request additional funds? Or is it possible, if a lawsuit were filed, that you would turn to Akin and say, can you start handling this right away? And then we'll see, you know, when we get to that point?
No, as I said, it was, we wouldn't come back to you until these funds are expended. We anticipate that any lawsuit filed on... I'm sorry. We anticipate that any lawsuit filed on the EIR would be filed within the first 30 days after your action last week. And so we would know whether there is going to be a lawsuit and we, we already anticipate what will happen. And Akin Gump will immediately be a part of the litigation team defending that. All we're saying is that we anticipate that amount of money will last until the end of the, of next year. We won't need to come back to you for more money on that contract. We've sort of come back in small pieces now. We wanted to say this is what we think the entire year will cost without litigation.
Okay, well, that's what, so you've budgeted out a year without litigation. Litigation is expected nonetheless by everybody with a pulse.
But we don't, we don't know exactly...[1742.12] But we don't know exactly--
And so it's reasonable to conclude that some, if not a significant portion of the $2.2 million, will be spent either A, preparatory to litigation, or B, actually on the litigation by Akin. And then you will then come back at some relevant point and ask for supplemental funds, should they be needed.
That's possible. But as I've said, much of what we've spent, what they've already expended, and what we anticipate them doing with this $2.2 million is pre-litigation.
I understand that. But again, if litigation occurs, you would expect this $2.2 million--
Would not last through the end of 2005.
To be used by Lawa to pay Akin for work on litigation.
Correct.
So in fact, as we vote on it today, while it has been characterized as a vote on non-litigation funding, everyone in this room who expects litigation, and that includes everyone, should expect that this $2.2 million, in effect, is the first funding request that will be spent to defend Lawa against lawsuits.
When you pay your lawyer, you pay them to defend you, you pay them to do advice, and you pay them to do--
But this shouldn't be like pulling teeth. I mean, you agree with me, right?
I'm not, of course. I mean, we've said that. We've said that what Akin-Gump does, in the report that you have before you, which I'm sure you've read, it says what Akin-Gump has done, which is do a lot of this pre-litigation. Carlisle Hall's been instrumental in the negotiation with the coalition and with the school districts, and in drafting documents. So all of that is part of what Akin-Gump does. They've been involved in the federal regulatory actions. And so all of that, including litigation, is what this money will do.
I understand that. I just, I want to be clear. This is a vote today on the first of perhaps many outlays for legal fees on the master plan that will relate to litigation. That's just clearly, that's what, Mr. Hall, am I missing it?
No, you're correct. Although I would indicate, we have actually been in litigation on behalf of the airport in the past on other items that have related to early phases of the master plan, or the lack of a master plan. El Segundo, at one point, sued the city in Lawa because it was complaining that there was no master plan. So we had, we assisted the city in that litigation as well. That's part of the earlier 9.7 million that Claudia Cullen was referring to.
Thank you.
Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, obviously, it takes a lot to do a master plan, and it takes a lot of legal work. And Mr. Weiss is right. Actually, a lot of the work that has been preparatory, whether it's an EIR, whether it's a legal document, whether it's the discussions that were brought to this council about the city of El Segundo, not only has our city attorney been involved, but our outside counsel, both our outside counsel here, as well as our outside counsel who has more specific federal FAA experience, has been involved. Obviously, every time an attorney is involved in helping you do something, that can be called pre-litigation, because if they're doing it well, it's so well that there won't be litigation, or that litigation won't be successful. So I think it's very hard sometimes to determine what is litigation or not litigation type work. But beyond any litigation, what this outside counsel is doing is, members, remember, in our specific plan, each and every project has to have further environmental analysis, has to meet muster with FAA at the NEPA level, the National Environmental Policy Act. Mr. Hall and his firm are going to be assisting the Lawa and the city attorney in doing that. So the better we do our job up front, the better they do the legal job up front, the less likely, hopefully, that we'll be spending a lot of money on extensive litigation. Might there be lawsuits? Absolutely. Might there be lawsuits by some entities who are already telling us they may just sue to protect their legal rights and remedies, but really expecting not to pursue heavy, high costs on litigation, instead are hoping to settle? Absolutely. So the more we can do the better work up front, the more we can talk with these other entities that are looking and thinking that maybe litigation is the route, doesn't necessarily mean big, big, big bills. It means let's sit down and negotiate and talk. And when we do that, we want our best attorneys who have helped prepare the record, who can help fine tune it in terms of responding to some of those entities that may or may not sue, but want to be at the table in any case. That's why we need this contract to go forward, and I would ask for an I-vote, which is what the committee did today unanimously.
Mr. Veragosa.
Yes, I guess I understand, because I understand you said about $9 billion, $9 million has been expended up to now, and we're asking for $2 million with this motion. My question is, has there been any thought to developing inside counsel, hiring inside counsel for the purpose, since we know that we're going to be, as Ms. Miskowski said, there's going to be, there's going to be an expensive process? We know there's a lawsuit pending at a minimum from the county. That could, I imagine, cost in the millions in terms of legal counsel for defending. And so is there any thought to the idea of maybe developing in-house counsel for that, save taxpayers?
Thank you for asking that question, because actually, that was something else I wanted to bring up in this discussion.
You're welcome.
One is that we believe that so far, the volume of work and the insufficient in-house city attorneys that we have would prohibit us from being able to have done what was necessary in a timely manner. Basically, Lawa has one in-house attorney who has been working on the master plan, and that's me. Hiring additional in-house attorneys, or, and training them, or shifting current resources and trying to train them in the expertise that's necessary for what would have been involved here with the outside counsel would just be impractical, and we think really imprudent. We think that the high level of expertise and experience that Carlisle and his fellow attorneys bring to this, they're one of the best firms in the country, and we think that the city has a real bargain in being able to, a real benefit in being able to use them on this project. However, we believe that if you would like to have an appreciable effect on the outside counsel costs for the LAX master plan in the future, because there are projects coming online, there are, although we believe the costs will decrease after this next year, they still will, there still will be costs, that we would think that you would need to authorize an additional six attorneys, positions in-house. They need to be senior attorneys. They need to be experienced in aviation and environmental law in order to be able to assist us.
The, so you're saying that there aren't currently, I mean, I know that we, under the current city attorney, they've done a great job of hiring in-house counsel with a broad panoply of experiences in administrative law, municipal law. You're saying there's nobody in that department or in yours that has the expertise? Or there aren't people, for instance, who maybe don't work for Lawa or the city attorney's office, but work in a private law firm or an airport in Oakland or San Francisco? Is that, I mean--
What we have, the city attorney's staff at the airport is pretty much, you know, at their capacity in terms of the work they already have assisting the airport. What I'm saying is that we could hire outside attorneys in and bring them in. They would have to be senior people with the kind of experience you're talking about. And we think we would need about six of those. And if you're interested in doing that, rather than paying outside counsel, we can do that. However, we think that the need for this outside counsel will, I mean, I think Carlisle would agree, will be decreasing over time. And so to bring in a lot of permanent city attorney staff with this kind of expertise may be unnecessary, may not be the most prudent use of resources.
And let me just speak to something. Nothing in my questions were meant to intimate that Carlisle doesn't have the expertise.
Oh, I know, no, I know.
I'm talking about saving taxpayer money.
Yes.
We're trying to, you know, I want to see if we can evaluate our options here, actually put on a piece of paper. You believe that the cost of litigation is going to go down? And that's true, even though we know that the county is going to be suing in this matter. And it may be that we prevail, or the city of Los Angeles prevails in that matter, maybe that we don't. It could be that it goes beyond, you know, the trial court level to appeals. My concern is that if we don't develop in-house counsel now for the purpose of trying to address the high cost of litigation, notwithstanding the great expertise that we're getting, you know, we're not doing enough to protect the taxpayers here.
Well, first of all, this isn't taxpayer money at all that funds these positions--
Ultimately, it's taxpayer money. It may come from, you know, the federal government. It may come from, you know, people are going to have to pay higher fees when they go to the airport, because, you know, they pass it on to passengers. If it's not, you know, people are paying for it. It doesn't just come out of the air. And my concern here is--
The airlines do--
You know, no pun intended, of course. My concern is that we study our options here, maybe that you're absolutely--
And I agree. And that's one of the reasons that the report that we sent to the council on this subject that you might have gotten recently talks about these six positions, because we believe that bringing in that expertise in-house would be very useful, and we believe that that would reduce our outside counsel costs. And we're in favor of that. We are recommending that. However, at the moment, I don't think we can do that in a way that will help us in the short term.
In the short term.
And I think that right now, particularly since Carlisle himself has been involved in this since 95 or 96?
August 96.
No, you know, there's no one we could bring in that would know the administrative record--
Sure.
--preparation for litigation like Carlisle and his legal team.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, this issue's fresh in my mind, because we just heard it in the Commerce Committee this morning. And in fact, one of the questions that I asked was about the magnitude of this contract and why we have to contract out so much. And in addition to that, we brought up the issue of potentially having more in-house people over at Lawa when it comes to lawyers. But one of the things that's very important, twofold, is when you have one of the best firms who's recognized from Washington and throughout the community, it's good to have them on board when you're dealing with such major issues like this. So that is a feather in our cap, to be able to have, be associating with and having a firm like that as part of our team. The dollars are very important as well. It's very important for us to remember that the reason why the public should understand, or at least appreciate, the magnitude of these dollars, and please, if you repeat what you said in committee, about some of the requirements here is elevated because we are having a lot more public input. We are having, this is an open process, more open than we've had before, and therefore we have a lot more correspondence with the community. Everything that we do correspond with the community formally in writing needs to go through the scrutiny of making sure that we're answering correctly and legally, et cetera. Is that the case?
Yes. In terms of the master plan process, that the ordinance that you've just, the specific plan ordinance that you've just approved will do is provide for, like I said this morning, an accelerated or a more complete public participatory process. And that process will have a lot more comments come to Lawa as they proceed through the projects, and more legal review will have to be necessary to make sure that Lawa is adequately responding to those comments. So the whole, making sure that we follow the whole process, making sure that the public's participation is, in fact, being recognized and appropriately responded to by Lawa will also increase the need for legal counsel. And quite frankly, I'd rather have Carlisle on the team than against--
Exactly. And you also mentioned that you wouldn't mind, and I offered to make sure that we have those discussions as well, how we can elevate the internal team as well. So we have the proper complement, and we have the proper balance, because this is going to be an issue that's going to go on for years, not just a few months. So that balance is going to be stricken. And also, having been a former business owner myself, I didn't enjoy having to hire counsel or what have you. But the bottom line, there is sometimes that you're looking at your core responsibilities, and you hire out for issues that, in fact, you know that you need the best of the best so that you can take care of your core responsibilities. And one thing I want to remind everybody about, I hope that tomorrow in the press, people don't try to make a big deal about this particular magnitude of a contract. And if they do, I hope the press actually looks at the facts, because the fact of the matter is, when you look at the magnitude of responsibility that we have, and the fact that we're opening up the democratic process for the community to be much more involved with Lawa and LAX, democracy costs money. And also, when you're talking about opening up the public process even more, democracy, fortunately or unfortunately, requires lawyers and attorneys to make sure that we're responding correctly, we're responding truthfully, and that we're actually being open to the public. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Other members of the council wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 19 was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, ready for item 19? There he comes. Forthwith on the previous item. And let me recognize Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like at this time to call up the city attorney, zoning administrator, and LAPD, I believe we have our captain here, and the sergeant come on down, all of our LAPD officers. College, I called this special one because it's extraordinary case where the city fulfilled all the necessary steps to ensure that everyone's rights were being respected, in particular those people who suffered for many, many, many years at the hands of this location because of the type of drug abuse, prostitution, illegal activity. And as you know, it's hard to move on issues like this, because we have all these legal maneuverings that occurs. But thanks to our city attorney, I just want you to give, I want you to give a brief overview of what happened today. For the record, I'm going through these steps, because I want to make sure that our city attorney is on the strongest, firmest ground. One, we take our actions. One of the accusations that has been asserted is that we are not giving the property owner their due rights. We're not giving them public hearings. This, quite frankly, is the second public hearing, and I want to make this brief. But for the record, I want to show that this city has respected everyone's rights, and we're doing our job in advocating for those folks who are being penalized because of the neglect of this property owner. So please, if we can have the captain just give us a quick summary of the situation, and then, or the city attorney, would it to begin?
All right. My name is Bill Larson. I'm a prosecutor with the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office. Basically, we're here for a second time on this particular case. The first time that we came here, conditions were being imposed on the Holland Hotel, which is located at 1404 West 7th. And we're here because of the fact that there's been continued criminal activity. I've been inside the hotel subsequent to the first set of hearings, and I'll let the police officer describe what was inside the hotel. But needless to say, it was in very bad condition. There were broken windows. Almost all the doors were kicked out. There were people inside the hotel who were using narcotics. There was one person in there who was in a room, apparently had been patronizing a prostitute. And basically, the conditions were not being complied with, from what I could see. And criminal activity, as we have seen, there were more arrests being made, and I'll let the officer speak as to that in more detail. But we have tried to work with the property owner on this particular matter, and it didn't appear that it had done much good.
Please, Captain.
I'm Captain Mike Chambers. I'm the commanding officer of organized crime and vice division. I think this case, from my standpoint, is a prime example of how the system works. It's a great relationship between the City Attorney's Office, Planning Department, the Police Department, and community members. This location has been a problem for many, many years in the area. And realistically, the real heroes of this is Senior Lead Officer Serrano and her officers that work Rampart, that have worked with the community, worked with the City Attorney's Office to red a location that has been a plague of crime for many, many years in Rampart. And I believe the Senior Lead Officer would be the best person to address some of the specific issues.
I'm Officer Amanda Serrano. I've been the Senior Lead Officer for this particular area for approximately 10 years. During that time, the location of 1404 West 7th Street has been a magnet for criminal activity. It has experienced high narcotics and vice offenses. There's been a lot of drinking in public. It has, it's only a block east of an elementary school. It's posed a problem for the community with children in the area, and as a result of the activity at night and particularly on weekends. Since the hotel has been closed, we've seen a significant reduction in crime. We've also seen that in the last four months alone, there has not been a single arrest or report taken at that location. Keeping the hotel closed, I believe, would be the best thing in the interest and safety of the community.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the Planning Department if they can give us the exact address of the location where this is occurring, and just summarize real quickly the case.
Gary Brewer, Associate Zoning Administrator. On September 13th, I acted to require the discontinuance of the operation of the hotel use at 1404 West 7th Street, also known as the Holland Hotel.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank you for your hard work. City Attorney Larson has done an incredible job in the district in these cases. I want to thank City Attorney Roca De Godeo for their focus on these matters, and the officers-- Roca De Go Dile for their focus on these matters, and the officers for their hard work in the Planning Department for moving in a manner that's most expedient. At this time, I'd like to open this up for public comment. I understand we might have some cards on this item. And again, I'm doing this for the record to make sure that we're following all the necessary steps so that this action can take hold and withstand all legal maneuvering. Thank you.
Okay. Without objection, colleagues, we'll hear from members of the public who've submitted speaker cards. William Larson from the City Attorney's Office, Amanda Serrano from LAPD, and Frank Weiser.
Frank Weiser, I'm the attorney for the appellant. I take issue with Mr. Reyes saying that this proceeding does follow procedural due process. At the Plumb Committee hearing, Mr. Weiss, who was sitting on the committee, made a remark, "My clients were in India. We ask for a contingency of the matter," because he's marrying off his son there. Mr. Weiss, I believe, made a remark to the effect that he's probably better off in India than he is here. And so I find the bias here against these hotel owners does not meet, the appearance of bias at the very least, doesn't meet the requirements of procedural due process. I don't care what the city says about the substance of this case, because I think we disagree on the facts. This hotel is already closed. The issue is moot. But you are not giving due process to these hotel owners. You are not giving due process to these property owners when you make remarks like that. If this council really, truly wants to give due process, then in a case called Stivers versus P. seventy-one F-third, six thirty-two, Mr. Weiss will recuse himself, Mr. Reyes will recuse himself, and I would ask the council to do so. Because, as I said, the substance of the case is distinct from the procedural requirements under the due process clause. The U.S. Supreme Court has said that, the Ninth Circuit has said that, all the courts say that, that you are given an absolute guarantee that it's a fair and open proceeding. Now, we're here for two minutes. This is a rubber stamp for the Plumb Committee. We don't take any evidence in the Plumb Committee. The zoning administrator doesn't even record the hearings. Nobody has mentioned the fact that this hotel is closed. It was voluntarily closed by my client. The issue is moot. Revoking his conditional permit is not going to help anything because he's closed it himself. He's going to go through substantial rehabilitation of this property. And this area is admittedly a bad area, but it's not the hotel owner. This is an endemic crime area, and the city knows that, and it's the city's responsibility to clean up the area. It's not the business owners. So he's taken the step that's necessary to correct whatever has been accused of him. He's closed the hotel. I don't know why we're here talking about a revocation of a permit when he's not even operating the property. So we strongly object, we strongly object to these proceedings. We'll be in court. I mean, this is only a rubber stamp. We know it. And we're going to fight it out as we've done all the other cases. And I don't think the city has gotten anywhere with any of these hotels. So we'll see you in court. But just for the record, we want to make these remarks.
I believe we have Anna Martinez, who's filling out a card. She should have filled out a card. Let's give it a moment.
Yes, Anna Martinez. I'm community organizer for Clinica Romero. Yes, we have been working with the residents since nineteen ninety-five, since Mike Hernandez was the council member with that problem. Unfortunately, several residents left already because they went to pick at their kids at school. But Holland Hotel is still giving us problems. There is still problems of prostitution around the building, and there are gang members inside, going inside and out from the building. And also, they, in behalf of them, I'm giving this testimony, and please, close the Holland Hotel. We don't need this kind of business that is destroying our community. Thank you.
Ms. Martinez, and again, just for the record, there was pictures given to the committee, pictures where you saw drug paraphernalia, pipes, and it was just amazing how tolerant and how harsh, how harshly treated this committee has been because of these conditions. So again, thank you, Council President.
Mr. Weiss.
Colleagues, I simply want to say that at the Plumb Committee, we had a very fair and extensive and thorough hearing on this matter. We heard from civilian witnesses. We heard from police officer witnesses. And all of us on the committee had the chance to review photographic evidence that was presented by the city attorney that was completely convincing and frankly, completely disgusting. This is a hotel that was maintained in a inhuman and frankly, subhuman manner, given the sort of activities that were allowed to occur at that hotel. Mr. Reyes and his staff have extensive knowledge and experience with this facility, which is quite unfortunate, frankly, that any public funds have to be expended taking care of a problem such as this, which is a problem, in my view, that is created solely by the private landlord. And it's their responsibility, I'm looking at people in the audience, it's not your responsibility, folks, to pay for this. It's a responsibility of any decent human landlord to take care of this. Nonetheless, Mr. Reyes, his staff, the city housing enforcement folks, the police department, the city attorney's office have poured dollar after dollar of your tax dollars into dealing with this problem. And as you heard and saw a few moments ago, it is clear that the owners of this hotel still, to this day, do not care to do what is right, what is just, and what is humane. And so we acted the way we did at committee appropriately, on the basis of a solid record. As a council, I'm asking you to follow the actions of our committee. There is a report that states our reasons as a committee. And I will just, I'll just leave it at that. There is much more I could say, but I won't say about the advocacy in this matter.
Mr. Cardenas.
I was also in a Plumb Committee as well, and I will concur with Mr. Weiss and Mr. Reyes about the fairness in which the committee was held. I also remind people of the public, we are not a court of law. We are a legislative-making body. We make ordinances here. We pass ordinances here. We are not a court of law. So I'm a little surprised when people come here and they try to treat the forum as though it's a court of law. We have different rules, different requirements, and certainly, people can take us to court and then challenge what we do here as well. That's what democracy is about, and that's the freedom that people have. In addition to that, I'd like to also point out that someone said earlier that this particular owner is at this time not operating it as a hotel. And while it was operated as a hotel and open to individuals who wanted to do business there, many, many other activities that were reported in committee were going on that were very egregious to that property and also the community at large. And the reason why we have to take action instead of just saying, "Oh, well, they're not doing it right now, so we don't need to do anything. We just need to assume that it's going to stay that way." The fact of the matter is, that owner could at any time, should we not take action, that owner could at any time resume those activities once again. And that's why we have to take our responsibility seriously. And that's why we have to take action based on what we know of the potential of what has been going on and what has actively been going on at one time with this particular property and these particular owners. And I say that kind of, it's ironic that on that same day, I had an issue in my district where an owner voluntarily said, "I'm going to curtail the hours of my business." And while they curtailed the hours of their business, the crime and gang activity and the congregation that was going on there that were causing gunshots going through the walls of the apartments next door ceased almost completely. But guess what? Because it was voluntary, the owner just decided one day that they were going to open up until all hours of the morning again. And therefore, we had to take action. Thank God, no one was killed in the interim. But the bottom line is, we would be delinquent if we were silly enough to think that if someone who owns a property changes the way they do business, in other words, by curtailing a particular activity for just a little while, that we should just take it at that and not take our responsibility seriously and take formal action. I thank you, Mr. Reyes, for what you did in committee, and I thank my colleagues on the committee as a whole for bringing this forward to the entire council. We need to do the right thing. We need to take action. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for the record, this has been items nineteen and twenty concurrently, as requested earlier by Mr. Reyes.
Item number twenty, it's a different location, a different action. But I know we have a large group of people here that's been waiting for all day.
Okay. Well, let's vote on nineteen, and then we'll take up twenty separately then.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's open the roll on item nineteen, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, that is item nineteen. We now have item twenty. Did you want to begin with the same staff presentation?
Yeah, just for the record, they can do it very briefly. And I know, if we could just move on, I just want to get the address, the location, and the cause of action, and a quick one-sentence for the record, and we can move on.
Yes, Gary Boer, Associate Zoning Administrator. On September thirteenth, I, this was a matter that was not quite as serious as a Holland, but nevertheless, there had been problems with the operation of the Stewart Hotel, which is located at seven eighteen South Union Avenue. So I reimposed the conditions, the corrective conditions, to try to bring them up to operation so that it would no longer be a nuisance to the public welfare.
Just real fast, please.
As the senior lead for the area, I wanted to report to you that we've had about a hundred thirty-five arrests and police reports taken there within the last four years. It's a high-crime area. It's an narcotics, vice, and also a gang location. It is very important that the conditions remain in place so that the property is not allowed to slip back into the condition it had been previously.
Okay.
Once again, my name is Bill Larson. I'm a prosecutor with the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office. We had, in this particular property, a bad history of serious gang activity, shooting, a number of problems that had occurred. Then, conditions were imposed, and those conditions have worked to improve the situation. However, in the last month or so, we've seen an increase in some criminal activity there. We had a large narcotics arrest that was made. Pictures were presented by LAPD at the Plumb Hearing with several bags of marijuana. So obviously, there are still some concerns regarding the operation of this property.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. That was for the record. And I guess-
And without objection, we'll hear from the following members of the public. Ramiro Ibarra, Ramon Corrales, Margaret G., Maria Esther Tejada, Anna Martinez, and Frank Weiser.
They all left. They had to go pick up their kids. But I think we just have one person, Ms. Martinez.
Yes, also Anna Martinez, community organizer for Clinica Romero. And in behalf of the Cambria community, we are supporting the zoning administration of the city of Los Angeles. Please keep the condition, because we have a little peace now, and please keep the condition for Stewart Hotel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members whose names I announced, which has come forward at this time?
Hi, how you doing? My name is Ramon Corrales. I'm the manager of the Stewart Hotel, seven eighteen South Union. I'm just here to say, you know what, we're not responsible for the crime that happens around our building or in the streets. We are running our hotel excellently. You know, we have no problems. We have security. We have cameras. We're working with the conditions that you guys oppose with us, excellent, we're renovating, pretty much working with you guys. And I'm not an officer. Neither are my guys, the owner. We can't stop what's going on outside. That's where you guys need to step in, the city, the police officers. Like I said, we can't do this alone. And what can we do when stuff like this happens in the streets and cops just drive by, look in a direction and just take off? There's people standing in the streets. You know, that's not my job to move people out of the streets, city streets. That's your guys' job. If they look suspicious, that's fine, you know? You guys got to stop and take a look, you know? Driving by just won't do anything, you know? Like I said, we have a security system, cameras. You guys can look at it anytime you guys want. You guys are invited anytime you guys want. I said, you know what, we're trying to work with you guys. That's pretty much all I got to say.
Yo necesito un intérprete, por favor. ¿Lo puedo hacer en español?
Ahorita viene. Ahí va.
Mi nombre es Ramiro Ibarra, y vivo en el siete cero siete, Sur Carandula Street, in Los Angeles.
Carandula Street.
En el mes de enero, yo estuve viviendo en el hotel hasta el mes de junio. Y en el tiempo ese, que son seis meses, casi la mitad del año, he visto que el control de la oficina es casi parecido al county jail.
My name is Ramiro Ibarra. I live at seven oh seven, Carandula Street, in Los Angeles. I was living at that hotel from January to June, almost for six months, which is almost half a year. And what I noticed during the time that I was living there is that the hotel is being ran almost like the county jail.
No puede entrar nadie nomás por entrar y abrir la puerta, porque el control lo tiene el que está en oficina. Para yo agarrar un cuarto allí, batallé como una semana para poder entrar y estar entrando.
No one can just go in by opening the door. The control of the entrance to that hotel is ran by, or administered by the manager. It took me about a week to be able to get a room to live in that hotel.
A la entrada del hotel siempre hay las reglas que se tienen que cumplir dentro. De eso de las ocho, las siete, siempre los pasillos están completamente vacíos. No hay gente caminando en los pasillos. Están-
Okay, wait. There's a policy that people need to follow upon staying at that hotel. After seven or eight p.m., there are policies posted that there's not supposed to be anybody walking or activity taking place on the hallways of the hotel.
Algunos solamente salimos a tirar la basura, y eso es todo. Pero los pasillos mantienen vacíos. Además, el lobby, no hay personas. Allí no puede estar esperando uno a alguien. Para ir a visitar a alguien, hay que esperar afuera, y que le den la autoridad para entrar.
Some of us just merely go outside to throw away the trash. As a matter of fact, no one can be waiting in the lobby, waiting area, for anybody that's staying in the hotel. If somebody comes to visit you while you're staying at the hotel, they have to stay outside or get permission prior to entering that area.
Mi frente del hotel puede quedar gente, porque vinieron mis familias a visitarme a mí, y estuvieron, es más, no me visitaron porque no los dejaron entrar.
As a matter of fact, very few people, hardly anybody can get in. On one occasion, some of my relatives came to visit me, and they were not able to come because they didn't have prior permission to come in.
Entonces, lo que yo me fijo, que tal vez el problema este fue tiempo pasado, y todo se ha ido arreglando. Entonces hay oportunidad para que sigan arreglando la situación.
And what I'm noticing in conclusion is that perhaps all these problems were occurring in the past, but now these problems are being remedied now in the future, and there's hope perhaps to continue bettering whatever problems had taken place in the past.
Y los cuartos ahora están en mejores condiciones, en todo su sistema de alfombra mejor, mejores muebles, mejor atención. Así es que no veo una razón por la cual puedan tomar una acción muy contraria a todo.
And as I notice, is that everything is being rehabbed. There's better carpet, furniture, and rehabilitation is taking place in a much better way. So I don't see why this should take negative action on this issue.
Concluyo con esto, la calle es libre y la gente pues hace lo que quiere dentro de la, en la calle. Pero dentro de ese lugar pues el control ya está muy ordenado.
And I want to finish by saying that there's freedom in the streets, and people have freedom, so they do whatever they have to do. But there's control and regulations taking place inside the hotel, and things are very orderly now. Thank you. That's all.
Frank Weiser, on behalf of the appellant, I'll make the same procedural due process objections I made before. Just to remark to Mr. Weiss, as far as advocacy, last year you closed a hotel, or two years ago, and I reversed it in the Ninth Circuit, a case by the name of Wong versus City of Los Angeles, that's in the federal appendix. So the city is not immune as far as its decision-making. And you certainly may feel you're immune here in this city council, but when it gets before the Ninth Circuit, it's a whole different ballgame. This hotel has been operated by this owner for some twenty years without incident. And then some six years ago, there's been a longstanding battle with some of his properties. There's been litigation. In fact, this property is now before the Ninth Circuit as far as the original imposition of conditions, and the conditions are still being challenged. That being said, as far as our challenging the conditions, we're still not disagreeing with the city in trying to cooperate with the city and trying to make sure that the area is a good area for the public and for the hotel guests. And he has put in all the cond- And he has put in all the conditions. The only thing we objected to was a 24-hour security guard. At the zoning administrators' hearing, Mr. Larson, I thought, went on the record and specifically stated that this property had gone a long way towards resolving a lot of the issues. And in fact, I thought I heard him say that there might be some flexibility on the security guard. Nobody can afford a 24-hour security guard. It costs some $4,000 or $5,000 a month. That money is drained from the hotel and then doesn't allow the hotel owner to make the necessary fixtures that he has to make. This property's gone through a rehab in the last year of some $200,000, $300,000. As you heard from the previous tenant, it's well-secure. If there are problems in the area, it's not the hotel owner. He is cooperating with the police. He is cooperating with the city. There's no reason to put an owner's condition of a 24-hour security guard. So we're preserving our rights. We're still challenging the conditions, but the main condition that we have a gripe with is the 24-hour security guard. He does have a 24-hour patrol, and that is all that is necessary, given the fact that this is a gated hotel. Nobody can get in and out without the permission of the owners. They're very strict on who gets into this property and who doesn't. We strongly dispute the issue of about in the last month, there is no crime in the hotel itself. So we'll challenge it, and we know that the city is not going to agree with us, but this is not a problem hotel. It's certainly nothing like what we heard before about the Holland. And as I said, there should be some flexibility. Other cities will take into consideration and weigh what an owner's cost is, the private interest versus the public interest. And that's not being done here, and that's not fair, and it raises certain constitutional issues.
Council President, just again, this is pertaining to the Stewart Hotel at 718 South Union Avenue. Unfortunately, many of the parents that were here to speak on this issue had to leave because they had to pick up their kids from school, but we had testimony as to all the crime activity that goes on in this building. We had photos of drugs and bags and money inside the hotel. So again, for the record, the type of activity we see is occurring inside the hotel, and therefore, I'd like to ask for your support in imposing all the conditions proposed by the Planning Department on this particular case, both 19 and 20. I want to just thank my colleagues for their support and for advocacy and looking at this issue for what it is, a serious imposition and a serious penalty against the community because of neglect by the owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members of the council wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Madam Clerk, let's send both items 19 and 20 forthwith, please, and proceed to the next item.
Next item is item number 21, called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss.
Yes, thank you. You know, I want my colleagues to meet the folks who are here from Overland Avenue, and I just want to say to my friends on Overland that, you know, this morning and now this afternoon, you've seen the legislative process move rather slowly. It's my hope that in the future, traffic will move just as slowly on Overland Avenue as our matters did today. If you all could rise and be recognized. Colleagues, what we have here today is a community on the west side of Los Angeles that has worked so long... Hi! Has worked so long and so hard and has done it the right way. I imagine in each and every one of your districts, you have as many streets and neighborhoods as I do where traffic and traffic calming is the number-one issue. And Overland Avenue, I'm sure you've all taken Overland. When you go to the west side, you've gotten off the 10 and you've traveled up Overland to get to Santa Monica Boulevard, or vice versa. And these are the faces of the people who live in the houses you drive by as you drive up Overland Avenue. And they have worked so long and so patiently and so well, not only with my office, and I think you would all join me in thanking Paul Backstrom from my staff for his amazing efforts here. But one thing they've done particularly well is they haven't viewed themselves as an island. They have worked with the surrounding streets, the surrounding neighborhood. Bob Similuka from the Homeowners Association, who represents that entire area, is here with us today as a testament to that. And so what we're enacting today is a measure which will downgrade the status of Overland to enable us to put in additional and appropriate traffic calming measures that don't just make sense for this one street, but which makes sense for the surrounding community. Because all of you know that it's not really fair or appropriate for one action to have an equal and opposite reaction. Overland has borne more than its share of the burden over the years. You want only what's fair, and I want to particularly thank Arturo Martinez, Mark Morocco, and Shannon Burns. You guys have been real leaders in this effort throughout at committee, in the community, and here at Council Day. I am very sorry that you had to wait so long. We had community members here on the LAX matter. We had community members here on other matters, and we had law enforcement officers here on other matters. And so I'm sorry that it took this long. But in a moment, it will happen. The council will vote to give Overland Avenue the street designation it frankly correctly and properly deserves so that we can move ahead to make your street a neighborhood. And thank you very much, a neighborhood street. Thank you very much for coming here today so my colleagues can literally see your faces and understand when they travel to places on the west side, they're traveling past your homes, and we need to be respectful of that fact. The action we're going to take in a few moments will, in a very real way, for the first time, show the city of L.A.'s respect for your street. Thanks for being here, folks, and when I go for my run tomorrow at UCLA, I will be wearing my Save Overland Avenue t-shirt. Thank you.
Mr. Villarreal.
Yes, Mike, first of all, let me just share with you, if I can, a very positive comment that my colleague Greg Smith just gave all of you. He said, "This is a very impressive number of people to show up for an issue like that." And Councilmember Smith, this matter was before committee. You were on city business and not with us. Councilmember Labange was with us, and we had an opportunity to hear just why there's such a passionate outpouring of support here. This street, Overland, has unfortunately been a place where too many people have died because of the lack of traffic calming. Too many people have been injured on that street. They've lost neighbors and friends and family. And we heard those very tragic stories, and I think both Councilmember Labange, who I guess Ms. Hahn is speaking to right now, we heard, we got to hear that. And I'll tell you, after hearing that, you can't help but feel like the little guys won. People came together, spoke out, organized, and said, "We want the city of Los Angeles to address the dangers on our street, in front of our homes. It's just unacceptable." Thank God for Jack Weiss, who listened clearly, pulled me and Tom by the ear and said, yes, pulled us and said, "We need your support," and we gave it. Because in this city, as much as we need to move people and goods, we also need to respect neighborhoods. We also need to work and build consensus in neighborhoods for traffic calming, and that's what this is about. And I can tell you, redesignating this from a secondary highway to a street where people live is the right way to go. We're going to do that in more neighborhoods, because this isn't the only street that has this kind of, frankly, traffic and gridlock. It's a parking lot. And so thank you for coming. It shows what people committed and organized can do to make a difference. We appreciate your work, and we look forward to working with you to create more traffic calming opportunities in other parts of the west side in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you all so much.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to rise and support my colleague, Jack Weiss, on the effort. As you know, we will be redesignating Overland. I need to ensure the future street improvements, as indicated here in the report. I was happy to weigh this out of my committee. One, because I believe our attorney friend was making sure that we expedited this process. So probably the time that you spend here waiting is the time you would spend in committee. So it kind of works itself out in the wash. But I was speaking to some of the representatives earlier. This is a prime example of where we could look at circulators. We could find ways to intercept the traffic before it gets into your neighborhood, especially when you're pulling off the freeway and people are shooting up into UCLA as a shortcut. So these are the kinds of elements that are before you. I believe it offers the ability to look at these circulators. It's a program that I believe we should be much more aggressive with, and I hope between Toronto Transportation and MTA, we can start studying these dynamics in a manner that's very real in order to preserve our neighborhood. So thank you much for your patience, and we're going to vote now, I believe.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Sit down and relax. You've been standing too long. And congratulations for your advocacy. Jack, as you spoke of earlier, I take motor, and I haven't been often on Overland, but there's a hand for motor. But also, as reminded, members, we do cross the city. Whatever you did on Motor Avenue, Jack, I think is a positive. You narrowed the streets there, and I think we all should look at that. Traffic calming, I know, is one of the number-one issues I work on. I know the mayor's working on that. I know each and every one of us is working on traffic calming. I believe in the philosophy, big traffic on big streets, because I think it's real important to try to keep it off neighborhood streets in that situation. But in looking at that, and I think it's important, too, to look at all the work that we need to do about traffic. Because if I did an instant poll now, I bet you there'd be a few people who've been a victim of crime in Los Angeles. Anybody been a victim of crime in Los Angeles? Raise your hand here. One, two, three, four, five, seven. Too many people have been a victim of crime. How many people have been a victim of traffic in the last 24 hours? See, everybody's impacted by traffic, and in neighborhoods, and all of us, including ourselves, because it's not just those who may live on Overland, but those of us who live in Silver Lake, or those of us who live wherever we live. We have to slow down and be safer. I have a brother who's in the hospital now because he didn't have a seatbelt on, and that's unfortunate. He was trying to get something to the market late or some situation and didn't have a seatbelt on. It's important that we all drive slower. So to remind you all to drive slow and safety is so important. I just want to thank everyone who's been involved. And Jack, it's nice you mentioned your deputy, because it's your deputies who get a lot of work done for us, and to call out your deputy was a good thing, and I think all our deputies work very hard for each and every one of us on that. And also remind the good people of Overland that you sat so long. Take a great elevator ride up to the top again. It's another beautiful day in L.A., and if you get on your tippy toes, I think you could see that little tower where the guy's blowing the horn to Utah. Thank you.
Other members of the council wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is President, item number 23, and that was called special for card from the public.
We actually have a couple of cards in item 23. Ms. Hahn?
Before we do that, could I ask for a reconsideration of item 31? Members, we need to make some technical changes, so it's now 31A. You have it before you, so if we could have reconsideration, and then if we could insert these technical changes, I'd appreciate it.
Let's open the roll. Reconsideration of item 31. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
31 now back before us, and I know Ms. Hahn's amending motion has been distributed. Unless there's any objection, let's reopen the roll on item 31 and Ms. Hahn's motion specifically. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, that item as amended is approved. We now come back to item 23, and let me call forward Jonathan Kevlis, John Walter, Sam Estrano, James McCormick, and Beth Steckler. Anybody wanting to come forward? I just read your names. Please line up behind the podium.
Hello, thank you very much. My name is Sam Estrano. I'm the Deputy Executive Director of the Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing. Our core L.A. nonprofit developer members have reviewed this ordinance and greatly support it. It's an innovative response to the affordable housing crisis in Los Angeles. We think it will increase production, and we applaud the innovative effort of the Planning Department to make this so. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is John Walter. I'm a developer of affordable housing in Los Angeles, and I've been observing and participating in the development of this ordinance over almost a year now, and I strongly support its passage. I'd also like to make note and compliment the Planning Department for having such an inclusive process to really understand the details of the problems and explore a wide variety of creative solutions. And this current townhome housing ordinance is, I think, going to be a landmark for the city and could very well serve as a national example of infill owner-occupied housing. Thank you.
Beth Steckler, Policy Director with Livable Places. We're a nonprofit housing developer, and we build entry-level homeownership opportunities, and we're in strong support of the townhouse ordinance. We think it's moving in a great direction. You all know we have a severe problem with our homeownership rate being down around 39% in this city, and we think this ordinance will help spur some new construction of homeownership opportunities that are closer to entry level. We'd also like to commend the Planning Department, and in particular, Jane Blumenfeld, for her excellent work on pulling this together. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm James McCormick, and I, together with my partner Bob Lallan, are developers for-profit housing and mixed-use projects. I speak in support of the small subdivision ordinance, having been aware of it since its inception in discussions throughout California. I am an urbanist in addition to being a real estate developer, and this very small package piece of ordinance that allows large parcels and small parcels to be developed as single-family detached housing will wield a very big impact on the face of Los Angeles, utilizing lands that have fallen out of good use, converting pieces of land that would be difficult to develop into viable housing sites. To make it concrete, we all know that many sites, say of 30,000 square feet, can be developed into apartment buildings and maybe even into condominiums. But those are generally double-loaded corridor, minimum, you know, personal amenity kinds of apartment buildings. This ordinance will enable that same site, say, a 30,000-square-foot site that would have 45 units capacity, to become a single-family homeowner site with 30 very distinctive single-family detached houses on it with yards and parking. That's a very significant step forward for the first-time homeowner and the pride of homeownership that an individual gets when they have a house of that kind. It further addresses one of the most significant barriers to development, which is the builder's liability cost that's embedded in every single project that we develop in the format of multifamily. This allows us to develop a property and to have the reasonable builder's liability that is related to a single-family detached house, not the aggregate liability that is related to multifamily housing. So it will increase production dramatically. I heartily commend your positive consideration of this ordinance and hope that you will vote it into law. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Kevlis's card will be added to the file. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, this is one of those policies that will have a tremendous impact on our landscape. I want to thank Jane and her staff and all the work that they've done to get this to this point. I just want to reaffirm the parking requirements stay the same. There's a few units that are evolving in my district. This is the kind of projects that will provide some relief from this crunch we keep hearing, given the... given the incredible demand for housing and the shortage of space. So again, thank you, Jane. If you just want to do a quick overview on the ordinance, just so that my colleagues understand the impact.
Yeah, just to be really brief, but I think all 15 of you will see these projects in your district, because it's the kind of thing that is going to open up really new creative ideas that we have never seen before in L.A. What this ordinance will do is allow, in commercial and multifamily zones, where you right now only have the opportunity to build apartments or condos, this will be a whole-new housing typology that we'll start to see, where you can have individual, single-family homes in those multiple zones, where people can own the lot and the house, be simple like they do a single-family home. Up to now, without this ordinance, that was not possible to do. So we'll start seeing small homes, not even small homes, but small footprints, and sometimes there are big homes, too. We've seen 3,000, 4,000 square-foot homes on these small lots. But many, many creative site plans and designs by all the talented architects we have in L.A. I think will open up all new worlds that will provide homeownership for at all ends of the spectrum. So I expect you all to see projects. There's been several filed. There's at least 10 people waiting till this ordinance passes to file projects as we speak. So I expect really good things in increasing our homeownership, making it more affordable, and new opportunities in L.A.
Mr. Carrigan.
Yes, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Planning Department for your creativity and working out this, which is now in the form of an ordinance. We actually had the test case in my district in Van Nuys, and it was something that, for example, the community wasn't happy with the fact that right across the street from single-family detached homes, an entire community, a developer wanted to put up an apartment complex. And they literally wanted to tar and feather him in the first community meeting. And then when we came up with this alternative, they actually were applauding him, and they actually appreciated it very much. They might not know the details of how hard the Planning Department worked to try to come up with this compromise, but the fact of the matter is I think we're opening up the door so that communities can welcome projects that, in fact, are higher density than perhaps the projects that were built 40 and 50 years ago, but we have no choice. And whenever we can get single-family detached, I think the City of Los Angeles needs to do what it can to make sure that we have that opportunity available to our communities. And this ordinance is going to provide that from henceforward. And I just wanted to thank all of you for all your hard work. And once again, it took creativity, not just hard work, but a lot of intelligent people to figure out that there's another way to think outside the box, there's another way to make sure that we can have a compromise opportunity available so that people can have that home and call it home, and people will not be sneering that then when they move in, because they're actually welcoming those families to the community, rather than saying, you know what, we don't like what's going on. People do like this concept. The community of Van Nuys has embraced it. Once again, the first meeting where the developer wasn't aware of this concept, or we as a city weren't offering this concept, it was really a nightmare of a meeting. It was shouting going on, a lot of people upset, a lot of people talking about the past, present, and future, and not in a good way. And after we were able to put this concept into play, it was just a wonderful thing to see. So thank you very much. Congratulations to the City of Los Angeles.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you to the Planning Department, and thank you for your good work, Jane, on this. And I want to thank the advocates who are here as well, and Mr. Reyes for helping shepherd this through, too. I think as we look at housing in the city, that we really need to do four things. One, we have to increase the overall development reform internally, and I know that we're working very hard on that, whether it's Bureau of Engineering, whether it's Planning Department, whether it's expediting with an expedited fee. That is critical. Second is expanding the toolbox that we have, and this is exactly, I think, what we're voting on today, is giving ourselves another tool. Third is the funding, which is an ongoing issue here. And fourth is community support. I think that we take two of those things here today, both expanding the toolbox and expanding the possibility of community support in a city where we have the second lowest rate of homeownership of any big city in the country. In my own district, where 83% of the residents are renters, this really gives us hope, especially at a time of continuing condominium liability, that we can actually do something to provide folks with homeownership. And on the funding side, Mr. Reyes and the rest of my colleagues, I pledge to work very hard with our General Manager Mercedes Marquez in the Housing Department to look at the soft seconds and the programs that we can tie into some of these, where we can do this in a way that also preserves some affordability, so that we can make sure that the teachers that we always talk about, the police officers, the young couples, the working-class folks can actually have those ownership opportunities, so that it's not just the tool, but it's also the funding in place there. So congratulations and thank you for your work.
Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, colleagues. I know we've been here a long time, so I won't speak. Jane, you've been here for a long time, too. This is fabulous, and as Mr. Garcetti mentioned, we have the second-lowest homeownership rate in the country, 39%. And we all know how critical it is in certain communities where we can increase homeownership really helps with that neighborhood. And Jane, you've come up with a great idea, and one in which I think is going to make a big change, just like the RIS zones. Mr. Reyes, in your leadership as Chairman of Plum, really looking at ways in which we can think outside the box and be more creative, in particular on homeownership opportunities. So I just wanted to stand up and say congratulations to you, Mr. Reyes, and to you, Jane, for your help and assistance in making this a reality today. Thank you, Ms. Reyes.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. Other members of the council wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 44, called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine.
Been resolved with the great assistance of the City Attorney's Office. Thank you.
Okay. Other members of the council wishing to be heard on item 44? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 44. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
47, called special by Councilmember Weiss.
And we do have one card on item 47. You want to hear from the public first, Mr. Roberto Haroldson. This is item 47.
Mr. President, council members, again, my name is Roberto Haroldson. I am from the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council, and I'm here today to speak on an issue that I've been living with for the last six months. About six months ago, when I first drafted a motion for the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council to consider a low basic service tier for the City of Los Angeles in its negotiations with the cable companies, it was a very, very scary thing for me to do, because initially a lot of my colleagues said to me, well, Roberto, I don't think you're going to be able to make any effect on the cable service that's provided to the consumers of the city. But it was my concern that so many people in our communities didn't have access to the cable simply because of the fact that they either did not want to pay the high fees, or simply just could not pay the high fees. And as our society progresses and we become more and more dependent on the media that's out there, certain people are going to be disenfranchised from that information if we don't make this available to them. And another thing I think was really important to me at the time that I brought this issue up was the fact that Los Angeles, we all want it to be the first at so many things. We want it to be the leader of so many things. And one of the ways that we can continue to do that is to work for a more progressive media-type system out there. And one of the ways to create a progressive media, the first step certainly, is to make it affordable for every citizen in this city, or at least almost every single citizen in this city that wants that service. So that's why I brought this issue forth, and I hope that you will pass this motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for this item. Mr. Weiss.
I want to thank the gentleman from Silver Lake for sticking it out so long and for saying what he said. This is very good news, and Mr. Garcetti and I announced it a few weeks ago, and I want to thank him and his office for everything they did to make this possible. What we're doing today formally is this is a friendly 245, so that this item can go into effect right away. In a nutshell, the city is requiring Adelphia to agree to a two-year rate freeze on basic cable to create the $12 lifeline package that the gentleman from Silver Lake was talking about, $12 a month for basic, basic cable, so you don't have to spend $30 or $40 a month for your cable service. And it will result in a 90% reduction in the infrastructure fee that, over the years, could literally result in $60 million of savings for consumers in the City of Los Angeles. It is a terrific agreement. I want to thank everybody in the city who played a role in making it happen, in particular the folks in the City Attorney's Office, who worked so hard to accomplish this fantastic deal for cable consumers in the City of L.A. But it's late, so I'd ask for an eye vote.
Mr. Garcetti.
Then I will be quick. First of all, it's been a big day for Mr. Weiss. Congratulations doubly. I didn't speak on the Overland one, but thank you for your leadership on this, because you were very tenacious about this. And it isn't many days when we as a body can collectively vote on something where we're returning, I think it's closer to $70 million, to ratepayers here in Adelphia, and particularly in northeast Los Angeles. I want to give credit where credit is due, and I said this in committee, but I want to say it also on Channel 35 publicly, as people are watching right now on cable. Roberto, your work, anybody who doubts that the Neighborhood Council system doesn't work need only look at a few of the examples that have come our way recently. And I think you shared at our breakfast of Neighborhood Councils recently, that when you started talking about this, people kind of treated you like, who is this Neighborhood Council person who clearly doesn't know anything? Not only did you know things, not only did you get the resources to educate yourself even further, we now will have a permanent $12 rate, which will really open up access and quality of life to so many people in the northeast Los Angeles, who, as you said, can't afford or otherwise would not be able to have cable television, who live in hills, sometimes where there is no television reception, and if you use an antenna, it's extremely difficult. So it's really something to be very proud of, and we thank you for the great, hard work that you did, the work that Silver Lake Neighborhood Council did in promoting that, Mr. Weiss, and in being so diligent, and on my staff as well, Josh Kamenski. So congratulations today.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, we're, thank you, people. I want to thank IT, there Bradshaw with her crew sitting there in the audience. Thank you for taking the leadership from the city side and making sure we held the company's feet to the fire to bring this about, so everyone will benefit. But I want to acknowledge the staff of IT, because I know that you're focused and involved and watching out for the taxpayers of the City of Los Angeles. Customer service with IT is number one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members of the council wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 48, called special for cards from the public.
And we do have one card on item 48 from Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. Is Ms. Hawkins here? Ms. Hawkins going once, Ms. Hawkins going twice. This closes public comment on this item. Members of the council wishing to be heard on item 48? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 52, called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Members, I just wanted to take note of this item here. I know there has been work done to consolidate our Office of Public Safety within General Services, but we wanted to make sure that as they relocated rangers to this office, that we wouldn't lose the ranger and the important ranger. And in fact, we would improve in our ability to staff rangers at parks, regional parks throughout the city, not just Griffith Park, but also Westlake Park, Eastlake Park, Lincoln Park, Hanson Dam, Harbor City Parks, the Pobeta Basin. All the large regional parks should have a ranger by name who would be assigned to care and enhance that park and interface. Now, what this is, this is fold this into the budget process. Talking to Mr. Fujioke, who strongly supports this here, and it will continue the importance of our ranger program. It does have both the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council, that also took a position on this and support, and I would ask all members to support this, and ask that your staffs focus on this in the coming budget months, because it's long overdue. We have these great, big parks, but there's no one person who's the interfacing constantly, daily with the community to protect, to nurture, to enhance that open space. So I want to ask for an eye vote, and I appreciate all your support on this matter. Thank you very much.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Labange, I rise in support of this idea. You know, it's just so important as we move forward, whether we're trying to streamline and making our operations more efficient and more accountability, what we have to make sure is that we have designated park rangers at our larger regional parks. You're absolutely right. And part of the problems I've experienced at my Harbor Regional Park have been because we do not have a designated park ranger there at all times. And that's not just safety issues, it's environmental issues. We feel like a lot of the problems at Harbor Regional Park had to do with, you know, the homeless encampment there. We believe that it had a lot to do with people who didn't understand about what they could and couldn't throw into the lake. And we think if we had a designated park ranger there, a lot of our problems at that park could be resolved. This also calls out Cabrillo Beach and Angels Gate in my district, and I think that, again, those two areas would be greatly enhanced by a designated park ranger. This is not to discount by any means our Office of Public Safety, where we're going to have more security patrolling these parks, which also we need. But the park rangers, I think, serve another function, and I like the fact that we're calling them out by name designated at these larger regional parks in the City of Los Angeles. Our constituents are going to appreciate this, and this is going to prove to be a valuable deployment of our resources, I believe.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Our next speaker is Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, and I want to support Mr. Labange's motion today, that I know Ms. Hahn seconded, and I support it as well. As we have had the discussion for the last year about the Office of Public Safety, we've listened to the community, we've talked to a lot of people, many representatives from your district, Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Labange, have come forward and shared some of their concerns and challenges that we are trying to meet, not only in the development of the Office of Public Safety, but in addressing the motion that Mr. Labange put forward, and as we work towards developing a budget that is cognizant of ensuring we have not only security, as Ms. Hahn mentioned, at our parks, but also some of the other services that our communities have historically been accustomed to receiving in those areas. So I just wanted to stand in support as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruehl. On behalf of the Echo Park residents as well, Legion Park adjacent folks, thank you, Mr. Labange. We open the roll on this. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 53 was called special for Councilmember Villarogosa.
If there's no objection, we have two speaker cards on this. I'd like to open public comment for four minutes on this. Invite Brian Allen and Margarita Beruman. Beruman, excuse me.
Greetings. I am Brian H. Allen, a 30-year resident of northeast Los Angeles, about four miles from the proposed demolition project. The bicycle helmet symbolizes that I am a low-pollution and pollution-free transportation consumer. Mr. James X. Washington Jr., a decades-long transit advocate and member of the ERAHA, Electric Railway Historical Association, wanted to appear here to oppose this project, but he could not come today because of confusion over the meeting date to which this would be continued. Here's a speaker card. I register opposition to this project on his behalf, as shown on a speaker slip, which I will introduce into the record. Mr. Allen Fischel and other ERAHA members opposed this demolition project also, but could not appear to speak. The remainder of my comments are mine alone. I incorporate by reference all of my hand-scribbled notes here. The arguments against this project generically are four. Number one, contrary to the DPW report, the bridge is quite historic. Two, demolishing the bridge inevitably will kill some motorists and auto crashes, which are physically impossible now. The bridge represents an element of the high-flow arterial highway strategy, an alternative to freeway expansion, such as for the Route 710 freeway, which would be severally setback if examples of flyovers are destroyed. And the site does have transit potential, as shown in SCAG's 1989 Railroad Right-of-Way Evaluation Report, which refers to this site, and the LACTC's Route 1060 Route Refinement Study, which, again, goes through this very site, totally ignored by the Department of Public Works.
I ask you to conclude, please, sir. We have other speakers.
I will incorporate by reference to balance of my comments, which I'll introduce into the record. If the city clerk would please take custody of them.
Great. Sergeant, can we take that, please? Next speaker.
I came to address the council, because I think this bridge, I think this bridge is very dangerous. I am for the project, but it's very, the information that's given out to the owner, the business owners out there, is not sufficient to know what exactly it's going to happen, when it's going to happen, and how it's going to affect them. There's several business people worried about what's being taken over, what land is going to be done. But more importantly, I want to ask the city council, if you knew that you could save at least one life... at least one life, wouldn't you do it today? And I think that if you started putting signs in that very misleading zone where that bridge is, we could start saving some of these lives that have been happening for the last so many years. People dying week after week after week in this particular section because it is not safe. It is not safe for the people that live in the area, it's not safe for the people that drive in the area because it's so confusing, they have no way of knowing where and how they're supposed to direct. Huntington goes in one way, Huntington North another way. This bridge is, there's several intersections all at one place, and people hitting each other or almost hit all the time. So I am for the project, but I would like the city to give more direction to the business owners and how it's going to impact them, and please save some of these lives by starting to put signs immediately, not tomorrow, and not leave this project go on like the 710 or anything else, but to do it immediately because it would save a lot of lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Members wishing to be heard, I have Mr. Reyes and then Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Council President. Before you, colleagues, is a technical amendment. The bridge essentially is at the border of CD 1 and 14. Councilmember Villarogosa is doing everything in his power to move this project forward. We are listening to the urgency. It took some time. We all know to garner the funds to do these major capital projects are very hard to do. We finally got there. We're going to move on it as soon as possible. The amendment is really about greening the median, and I believe it will complete the picture, and it'll benefit everyone. And it is a very highly-traveled corridor, Huntington Drive. All the folks in San Gabriel Valley, San Marino, Alhambra, San Gabriel, as they come off, come into the City of L.A., take this corridor, and it's a highly-trafficked, highly-traveled traffic area. So I would ask for an aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labange informs me that his questions have been answered. Other members of the council wishing to be heard, seeing none, let's open the roll and cite them.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Just to let council know that there is a substitute motion 53B, and I believe that's what Mr. Reyes was moving.
Right, that was his motion without objection. Roll is open. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved, and let's end that matter forthwith as well. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Wednesday, December 15th for personal business that meets council policy.
Ms. Hahn is excused.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused January 4th and 5th for personal business and January 11th and 12th for city business. Those meet council policy.
Mr. Smith is excused.
Councilmember Villarogosa requests to be excused Friday, December 17th. She'll leave at 11:00 a.m. That meets council policy.
Mr. Villarogosa is excused.
And Councilmember Ledgo requests to be excused Wednesday, December 15th for city business that meets council policy.
Mr. Ledgo is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Okay, colleagues, it's the end of our agenda. Do we have any announcements today? Announcements? Any announcements? If not, then please rise for adjourning motions. Please rise for adjourning motions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I regret the passing of Charlene Martinez, the mother of city clerk Frank Martinez, who passed away this past Wednesday night at the age of 80. She was a resident of Sun Valley for 50 years. She was an accomplished landscape and portrait artist who showed her paintings at Descanso Gardens and other local venues. She also used her artistic talents in teaching Sunday School as well. She is survived by her two sons, Frank and Robert, and three grandchildren, and we will all miss her sorely.
All members. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I'd like us to adjourn our meeting today in the memory of Helen Mosley, who lived in San Pedro since 1925 and was the grandmother for Petar Bakalich, who is one of the board members of the Friends of the Croatian Cultural Center. Helen was born in 1908 in Spokane, Washington, and moved to San Pedro in 1925. Her father owned and operated the H-10 water taxi where she met her husband. Mrs. Mosley played the mood music at the Cabrillo Theater in San Pedro. She passed away with her family present on December 7th. She is survived by her daughters Margaret Bakalich of Fullerton and Carol Flicker of Garden Grove, along with six grandchildren, seven great-grandchildren, and five great-great-grandchildren. Graveside Services will be this Saturday, oh, excuse me, they were last Saturday at Green Hills Memorial Park.
Mr. Ledgo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues asked that we adjourn in memory of Esther Smiklis, mother of Santa Monica City Councilmember and MTA Board Member, colleague of Mr. Reyes, myself, and Mr. Labange, Pam O'Connor. Pam's mother, Esther, was one of Santa Monica's most prominent civic personalities. She died last Friday at the age of 93. Esther married Detective Emil Smiklis, one of the most well-known Chicago detectives of his era. They raised a family in the city's south side. Esther moved to Santa Monica 12 years ago and continued to be a staunch supporter of law enforcement. She was